Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I would like to call this meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. Tonight is Monday, May 9th, 2022. Thank you to everyone joining us here in the council chambers and joining us online. We'll start our meeting, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, welcome and thanks for being with us tonight. We have all seven members of the City Council in the council chambers this evening. Mr. Fabrucci is participating remotely this evening. Do want to go through our next item, which is the approval of our agenda. And on our agenda this evening, we have, we'll have our introduction of new employees. Carla Henderson from our Community Development Department will be doing introductions. We've got three proclamations this evening. Our consent business is fairly lengthy. Councilmember Coulter has consent. We have three public hearings. Public hearing on our annual miscellaneous issues ordinance, public hearing on the tax increment financing for development at 8200 Humboldt Avenue South, and a hearing on an alcohol license violation at the Fraternal Organo of Eagles. And once we get into our organizational business, we're going to be talking about the 494 project and the update on the, what we have there. We'll have a discussion on our budget, our 2023 budget, and then go into our council policy and issue update. Council, anything to add to the, the agenda this evening? Any changes? Seeing none, I would move approval of tonight's agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Councilmember Lohman to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. We have an agenda. Item 2.1 on our agenda is the introduction to new employees. Our Community Development Director Carla Henderson is going to welcome our employees for us. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. I am very pleased to introduce three new employees. I'm going to do it in order of seniority. So Thomas Rambler Olsen began as a planner on March 28th, and he's here. He has an undergraduate degree in architecture, a master's degree in urban planning from the U of M. He's worked in multiple planning consulting firms on assignments in a wide variety of cities, from small town Minnesota to South Texas to Flint, Michigan. And he most recently was with the firm WSB. He commutes to work via the Orange Line, and he's looking forward to also bike commuting this summer.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. I appreciate working for you. I'm really looking forward to this opportunity. I think I have a lot of skills to bring to the community and to the Planning Department and Community Development in general. And I'm always available to answer any questions or just if you want to pick my brain or, you know, get to know each other, I'm happy to make myself available. And I'm really excited to be a part of this team. I think it's been great so far, and I foresee a really long time here.
Well, good. We're glad to have you onboard. That Planning Department is, is, is a good one, one of the best. And so glad to have you as part of it and looking forward to your contributions. Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. And our next employee is Taka Rowan, who started April 18th as an environmental health specialist. But he's not new to the city. He actually was an environmental health intern starting May of 2021. And then we really, we enjoyed his services so much that we offered him a temporary position in our Housing and Redevelopment Authority as a program specialist in October of 2021. And then a position opened up, which he interviewed for and was selected as the candidate. Taka comes to us with work experience in helping people in healthcare and providing emergency medical care as an EMT. And he will graduate this weekend with a master's in public health from U of M.
Good evening, Taka, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I just wanted to say I'm very, very thankful to be working here in the city of Bloomington, so much so that I've done my best to stick around for the past year.
Do you want to tell them that you had a?
Oh, yes, I did have an offer several months ago for another city, and I declined them to stick with Bloomington because I like it here so much. And I would like to do my best now and throughout the future that however long I'm here to make the city better. I'm not saying it is, needs to be better, but whatever I can do to make the city flourish for everybody.
Well, thank you. Congratulations on graduating this weekend. Well done.
Thank you, thank you.
Are you, are you going to take the big walk, cross the stage?
I will be there Monday evening, yes.
Northrup or is it down at Mary G?
Um.
You should find that out.
Yeah. I ordered my cap and gown today, so I gotta do all the rest of that stuff too.
Well, welcome aboard. Again, you're in, you're in a great department, and you're in good hands in our Public Health Department, but you know that. And so, welcome. Very happy to have you here.
Thank you.
For being part of our team.
Thank you.
Thank you, Taka. And our last but not least employee, she's virtual, is Anna Salvador. She started on, there she is. Thank you, thank you for coming in. May 2nd as our Housing and Redevelopment Program Specialist. We had a couple of employees that had their cameras off one time, so I was like, please put your camera on, so good job here. So Anna's been hired to focus on our Section 8 program and case management. She's originally from California and began her career in affordable housing in California. And I was asking her all kinds of questions, like, how does that work out in the city worth, you know, million dollar homes? And so she's been working in the affordable housing industry for the last four years. She has a bachelor's in anthropology degree from the San Diego State University and a master's in international development from the University of Pittsburgh with an emphasis on urban affairs and planning. So hello, Anna. I think you're muted.
Yeah.
No, nothing yet.
Her mother's visiting from California, so that's why she had to, she was like, I can't stay, my mom's in town, which we understand, so. Well, we'll bring you next time, okay?
Well, welcome aboard. We look forward to seeing you in person next time in full voice, and we'll have an opportunity to meet you then. So glad to have you onboard and enjoy spending the evening with your mother. Enjoy. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next three items on our agenda are proclamations, and so I'm going to head down to the podium here. Make sure I have everything. As I said, we have three proclamations this evening, and our first is item 2.2 on the agenda, and this is a proclamation for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And it is, it's an annual celebration or annual recognition that we do have, we do specifically here in the city of Bloomington, but of course, it's, it's recognized internationally. Our Human Rights Commission does an outstanding job of identifying and making sure that we recognize different groups in the city of Bloomington for proclamations, and this is a good example of that. And so, this is a proclamation for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, May 1st through the 31st, 2022. Whereas the city of Bloomington, through its Human Rights Commission, joins our nation in recognizing the month of May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And whereas during the month of May, we commemorate the rich and diverse culture of Americans of Asian and Pacific Islander descent and recognize that these individuals come from the 48 countries that make up Asia. And whereas the 2020 Decennial Census reports that 6.7% of Bloomington's population identifies as Asian or Pacific Islander American. And whereas we honor the perseverance of those who courageously reached for their hopes and dreams in a new land, and we celebrate the important impact this community has made on Bloomington's progress. And whereas the Asian American and Pacific Islander community constitutes a vital dimension of Bloomington's diverse ethnic and social fabric, whose language, cultures, and religious beliefs have enriched communities in all parts of the state. And whereas from the recent immigrant who brings fresh global networks and languages to the fifth generation child of mixed race, who represents the diversity of all of our communities, they have helped to uphold the founding principles of Bloomington for generations. And whereas, in light of increasing hate crimes against the Asian American and Pacific Islander community, Bloomington denounces these crimes and will continue to address the needs and concerns of these valued residents. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Tim Bussi, Mayor of the city of Bloomington, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2020, as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the city of Bloomington, dated this ninth day of May, 2022. As I said, so happy to do these, these proclamations and so happy that our Human Rights Commission takes the time to seek these out and to write these and to put these all together in such a nice way that they do. And I like doing these annual proclamations. And congratulations to our Bloomington residents who identify as Asian American and Pacific Islanders. So congratulations. Next up is item 2.3, and this is a proclamation for Respect for Law Week and our Officer of the Year proclamation. And every year, we, again, this is another annual one, a Respect for Law Week. And this year, our Optimist Club board member, Arlen Grusing, is here along with Chief Hodges. And to receive the proclamation, to say a few words, we'll also recognize Officer Matthew Ryan as the 2022 recipient of the Respect for Law Officer of the Year Award. I will read the proclamation, and then I will turn over the, the microphone to you folks. It's proclamation, Respect for Law Week, May 15th through the 21st, 2022. Whereas crime and its effect upon the lives and property of our citizens is of utmost concern and the continued efforts of our local government, citizen organizations, and individuals to curb this problem is greatly appreciated. And whereas the problems of crime touch and affect all segments of our city and can undermine and erode the moral and economic strengths of our community and the citizens if unabated. And whereas public awareness and determination to maintain the faith and the preservation of law and order and the appreciation of the importance of law enforcement officers and the roles they play in preserving social order in a democracy is everyone's responsibility. And whereas, Optimist Clubs and their members continue to sponsor and support programs aimed at combating crime and respecting law through year-round efforts. And whereas, each year, the Bloomington Optimist Club presents a Respect for Law Officer of the Year Award to an exemplary Bloomington Police Department officer who speaks to the professionalism of the department. And whereas, the Bloomington Optimist Club is honored to present the 2022 Respect for Law Officer of the Year Award to Officer Matthew Ryan. Officer Ryan is a 16-year veteran of the Police Department, serving his first two years as a community service officer, and will receive his award and be recognized for his service at an upcoming honorary event. Now therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussi, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th through the 21st, 2022, as Respect for Law Week in the city of Bloomington, dated this ninth day of May, 2022. As I said, this is one of our annual proclamations, annual presentations, and it is always one that I do look forward to and enjoy because it, it says so much and embodies the values and actually the determination of the city of Bloomington toward this goal of Respect for Law Week. And to, to include our Bloomington Optimist Club in presenting the Officer of the Year Award is always a, a nice piece of this as well. Chief, would you like to come up and say a few words here? And I'll get out of your way.
Thank you, Mayor. Officer Ryan is here. I'm going to turn it over to him. Do you got something you'd like to say, Officer Ryan?
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to thank the Optimist Club. I'd like to thank the Bloomington Police Department and City of Bloomington as a whole. This is an incredible honor. We were, our family was extremely surprised. We've got a tough three years battling cancer in and out of hospitals down at the U of M. And the city and the department have been nothing but extremely supportive to me and my family. And I'm continuing to work on getting my strength and, and returning to the department as soon as I can because it's a job that I love.
Thank you. We'll see you Wednesday, and we'll see you back here full duty in September. So, Arlen, do you have anything you'd like to say, sir?
Good evening, Arlen, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I spent more time in this room than any of you. I was a planning director here for 10 years and five years as an associate planner. And I used to put things behind where you're sitting, all sorts of color, it's not as colorful as when I was here. And Ms. Henderson, I thought you were going to start putting me back to work. I found all the things to do on Monday night, so I did, yeah. And, and for the new hires, there is hope. You could always be Santa when you're done. And it's a lot of fun. And I think I probably do more for people as Santa than anything. There was a girl that sat on my lap. You never know what you're going to get. She asked for something, a little toy. And I asked her if she wanted for something else. She said, well, there is one thing I would really like. And I listened, she said, what would you like? I would like you to stop at all the graveyards and to put a flower in all the graves. And my mind thinks awfully quick, but in that time, I shut up. I gave her a big hug and said, that's the nicest thing anybody's asked for. But anyway, the optimist is back. We're being meeting full-time over at Mugshots. I had a chance to meet with Booker. Thank, congratulations on a great hire. He's a great guy, and we look forward to working with him long into the future. Matthew, congratulations. We look forward to meeting you and spending more time getting together. The optimist is busy. We had our Easter egg hunt on the 16th, and we had a lot of kids, four, 500 kids. And we had another event in this room on the 16th, which was our Zone Oratorical Contest. And luckily, our two oratorical contest winners won the zone contest in this room. They went on to the district where they didn't win, but they did us all proud. So we like doing things for the youth, and that's what our goal is. So thank you very much. We appreciate the proclamation, and we love our continued relationship.
Let me present this to you.
Okay.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you much, Tim.
Appreciate it. And thanks for your recognition of Officer Ryan. He obviously deserves it.
Good man.
Congratulations, Officer Ryan, and we'll see you Wednesday. So Godspeed, man.
Sounds good, thank you.
Officer Ryan, looking forward to seeing you again. Your courage is inspiring. Well done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And our final proclamation this evening is item 2.4, is a proclamation for National Police Week and Peace Officer Memorial Day. And again, another annual or yearly recognition that we do play. We pay special recognition to law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of all of us. And so, a proclamation for National Police Week, May 15th through the 21st, 2022, and for Peace Officers Memorial Day, which is May 15th, 2022. Whereas there are more than 800,000 sworn law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of our own Bloomington Police Department. And whereas some 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in over 18,000 injuries, and since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 23,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty. The names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas, according to preliminary data compiled by the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund, as of December 31st, 2021, 458 officers were killed in the line of duty in 2021. This is an increase from the 295 officers killed in 2020 and the highest total line of duty officer deaths since 1930, when there were 312 fatalities. Unexpected 301 officer fatalities have been identified as caused by COVID-19. And whereas, the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty are honored annually during the NLEOMF candlelight vigil. The 34th Annual Candlelight Vigil will take place on Friday, May 13th, 2022. And whereas, the first recognition of the National Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day was signed by President Kennedy in 1962. It was resolved by Congress that May 15th be designated Peace Officers Memorial Day to honor all of the fallen officers and their families, and the week in which it falls be designated as Police Week. And whereas, in honor of Police Week and Police Officer Memorial Day, the Bloomington Police Department will join the Minnesota Law Enforcement Memorial Association between May 14th and May 15th to stand guard at the Peace Officer Memorial in St. Paul, followed by the attendance of a remembrance ceremony at 7:00 PM on May 15th. And now therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussi, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th to May 21st as National Police Week and May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the city of Bloomington, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation, signed this date, the 9th of May, 2022. A heartfelt thanks to all of the police officers working across the country, and certainly the police officers of the Bloomington Police Department, and the outstanding work that they do each and every day on behalf of the city is, is never overlooked. It is always appreciated, always understood that it's, the danger and the importance and the, the risks involved with it, and the courage that officers show every day when they put that uniform on and go out and do what they need to do to keep us safe. So Chief, if you could extend to your department our thanks once again and our congratulations as we head into Police Officers Week. Thank you. Moving on in our agenda, we are to item three, which is our consent business, and Councilmember Coulter has our consent agenda this evening. Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. I have heard of a hold on item 3.12, and Councilmember Lohman would like to comment on why he's not holding 3.6. I don't know if now would be the appropriate time to do that. But before we get to that, I want to put out the call. Any other holds? I am not seeing anyone, so I will move items 3.1 through 3.11 and 3.13 through 3.16.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent business as stated. Councilmember Lohman, a comment on item 3.6?
Yeah, Mayor, there was some confusion. I got some phone calls from some residents that were concerned. The 3.6 is a PMP street maintenance project, and some were confused that the Lindell bluffs were included in this. And I've confirmed with staff that Lindell bluffs is not included in this, it's just an overlay program. So that's why I'm not holding 3.6.
All right, thank you for that clarification, Councilmember. Any further discussion on the motion before us, where the consent business is stated? Hearing none? No further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Item 3.12.
Thank you, Mayor. This was held both by Councilmember DeLisandro and by Councilmember Carter.
Councilmember Carter, why don't you kick us off?
Thank you, Mayor. We were just arguing about who was going to go first. So this is related to the Bush Lake Hybrid Cattail Management, and I guess I just was curious if staff could talk a little bit more about the timeline of this and any impacts to visitors or people who are recreating around the north side of the lake there, as well as any public awareness or education that might be happening related to the effort.
I can't tell if Julie Long is heading for the exit or coming up to talk to us.
I'm coming to talk about cattails. I've learned more about cattails this year than I ever have in the past. So there are different species of cattails, and the hybrid one is the invasive one, and they will reproduce with the other two native species. And we had been contacted by some residents on Bush Lake who were seeing an influx of growth last summer. And so we've been working with the residents, and so the areas that have been picked are immediately adjacent to some of the neighbors that had inquired about the project, and then another little area to improve. So it shouldn't affect the water use, recreation uses of the lake.
Thank you. And can you just talk about, what does this, the management of these, what are they called again? But the hybrid cattail, what does that actually look like?
The sad thing about the hybrid cattail is to any ordinary person like yourself or myself, they look just like cattails. So we should have brought Jack Distill to answer those questions because on the genetics standpoint, you can tell some differences, but I unfortunately can't provide you any difference. Like when he shows them to me, I'm like, that's a cattail and that's a cattail.
Got it. All right, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Well, I got some of my, I won't put you on the spot, Ms. Long, I promise. I actually did get some of my questions answered, but I, but I wanted to hold it simply because this is, this is an area of, of work that we're doing in lots of different lakes, and there's, you know, there's, especially with cattails, there's harvesting, which is a very natural way to do management, and then there's the herbicidal piece of it. And my curiosity was, you know, why would we choose to do herbicidal cleanup when the harvester is available and there's other ways that we can do it? And Jack provided a very good answer, so I just wanted to make a note to everyone that if you have any questions specifically about, you know, our water resources and when we use herbicide versus, or in conjunction with, in his, in this particular case, apparently it's a three-part plan, and like two get taken care of by harvesting and the other one has to be herbicide. So it's like really complex and really interesting, and I'm grateful that we have staff like, like yourself and Mr. Distill to, to do this. But I, I just wanted to make sure people knew to ask that question of staff because it will, it'll be happening in lots of different places throughout the city of Bloomington over the spring and summer. And there are really good reasons why you might see chemical application if we're doing it. Obviously, if it's a private lake and somebody is doing it somewhat willy-nilly, maybe they're not doing it that well, and I would prefer that they call and talk to somebody like Mr. Distill to get good advice on how to do that. So we, minimizing herbicide is good, but some cases it has to be done, and I think it's really valid that we get folks to be aware of that and they know when, when it is and when it isn't. So great example of that in this case, so that's why I wanted to make sure it was mentioned publicly. Thanks.
Any additional questions on this? If not, I'd look for a motion and a second to move item 3.12.
Happy to make that motion. Let's see, I have to read it out loud since it's by itself, don't I? Okay, I move to approve the agreement with the Resource Environmental Services for Cattail Management Work on Bush Lake.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept item 3.12 as stated. Hearing no further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Councilmember Coulter. We will move on to item four on our agenda, which is our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. And as I mentioned earlier, we have three public hearings this evening. Our first item 4.1 is a public hearing on our annual miscellaneous issues ordinance. And I think this was one we had on the agenda a couple of meetings back, and we hit a time limit here, so I think we pushed it off a little bit. Our, from our planning department, Mike Palermo, I think, is with us to lead us through all this. There he is. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Get full screen here. Here we go. All right, so to kick off, this is our annual miscellaneous issues ordinance. For the sake of the public hearing, I think most of the council members have gone through this before, but Councilmember DeLisandro, I think this is your first introduction to the miscellaneous issues. This is where we take collectively a bunch of small ordinances all at the same time. So this year, we have 13 ordinances that we're bringing forth, and we do this because these ordinances are either small clarifications that need to be made, there are errors that kind of come up because references change, or terminology changes, or the state changes their code, or there are a little more substantives in what I call, like to call, kind of fast-tracked items that are still very minor in nature, but, and don't warrant a whole study session or kind of that big overhead that comes with a normal ordinance process. And you'll see as we get into that, yeah, there are some changes that we're proposing, but they're all, they're very not minor, and they kind of are consistent with how we apply the code already. So, this year, we kind of broke it up into kind of two sections. We have, as you can see here, the 13 different ordinances. Six of them, we're calling more cleanup and clarification. I numbered or lettered them to, for discussion purposes, and they kind of go in order from easiest to more substantive. So, you can see, A through F are those cleanup, they're not changing how we're applying the code at all. This is already kind of what we're, how we're already applying the code, or is purely just kind of a cleanup or an error that we found. I will kind of run through, in my presentation, Items G through M, as these are more substantive, and can kind of get into more of those details. But at the end, if we have questions, we can jump back to the different ordinances, or I have slides prepared for those cleanup items too, if there are questions on those. So this first item is our sidewalk linkage requirement. So for new development, or with a substantial redevelopment, those are usually coming for some sort of approval from the Planning Commission and City Council, and we usually have a requirement with a condition of approval that says, if you're going to be generating more pedestrian traffic to your business, to the, to the new use, we'd like to have some sort of pedestrian connection to make sure that you're able to access the building in a safe manner. However, if you don't have a redevelopment or a significant development to kind of trigger that, we don't have anything in our code. And there are some instances where it's an existing building, but a new use is coming in. So this is kind of adding language that would allow us that flexibility with our engineer when they determine it's necessary to provide adequate pedestrian connection to the right-of-way. So, so as you can see, it's a little bit more substantive, but doesn't require a whole study to go into this kind of ordinance update. So Item L, and I'm going backwards, because I kind of, I go easiest to hardest, so I wanted to start with the hardest to easiest. So, Item L is proposing real estate lease-up signs. So we have existing language that exempts multifamily apartment buildings from our, the sign code, from getting permits for signs for lease, for leasing. But these are permanent in nature, and they apply in certain situations. You can see it's kind of related to highway proximity, and this would be a little bit different in that it's temporary signage. It's additional signage on top of what's already allowed, and it's only for two years after the building opens up, because what we've heard from developers, this is the most important time, is you have a new building, high vacancy, you want to lease up as quickly as you can to start generating revenue and working, and filling up your building. So, this would be, is understanding that that is a crucial period, and that minimal amount of signage that's more on the pedestrian side, that's, that they can have on multiple sides of the property for two years would really be beneficial. So we saw this as kind of an easy win for, for new development, as we're seeing new development come online. Another thing that we've had interest in is dog runs. We have several multifamily buildings that have dog runs. It's kind of coming not uncommon these days to have that, but there was kind of this gap in our code where you, we have landscape yard setback requirements, and the dog run wouldn't be allowed in there. And from a staff perspective, dog runs are really compatible with landscape yards, they're usually kind of grassy areas where the dogs can run, so it just makes sense that they would be able to go in the landscape yard. We would continue to have a minimal setback about 15 feet from the property line, just to ensure that there is a buffer between where people might be walking. And we'd still have other requirements in place. It wouldn't exempt you from our fence requirements, so you couldn't, this wouldn't be a way to get a privacy fence where it's not allowed, or a structure where it's not allowed. Those will still be applicable. It still has to be compatible with what we see in a landscaped area, but just acknowledging that a dog run kind of fits with what the intent of the code is there. This next one is about circular driveways. In our code currently, we have language about circular driveways, and you can see kind of this middle one. This is a situation where the circular driveway has two curb cuts, and that's where this language ended up being, in a section of the code that talked about having two curb cuts on your property. Well, as it turns out, not all circular driveways have a second curb cut. You can see these two examples where they kind of loop in on itself. And so, we're just adding language outside the two curb cut section, just acknowledging that this is not really changing how we're applying it, but that there are situations where it's not, a second curb cut is not warranted. And it's really just keeping those standards that we have, which are limiting the kind of secondary part to 12 feet in width. We don't want to encourage an overly excessive amount of parking, and we also want to limit impervious surface when we can, so that, so that's the big part of that code section. Item I is adding film to our prohibited window cover. So we require in some of our zoning districts that you have windows that are fronting the streets, the pedestrian area. We're trying to activate the street, having that open sightline adds safety, because you're able to see and have eyes on the street. And we don't want people to kind of circumvent that window requirement by just covering it up with the film. We currently prohibit signage and other big advertisements that cover that window, and this is just kind of an extension of that, acknowledging that, that film covering, that opaque covering, wouldn't be allowed either. We want to keep that window actually open and visible for people to see in and out of the building. Item I, this is a situation where we currently have limitations in some of our mixed-use zoning districts on drive-through lanes, but the way that it was currently written, it was a little bit ambiguous in how we would apply that, so this is really just clarifying. You could have interpreted it as saying one drive-through per site, and it's really intended to be one drive-through lane per building. That's how we've been applying it, that's how we've always interpreted it, but if you literally read it, you might read it a different way. So we're just kind of adding language in that would acknowledge that it's one lane per building, recognizing that some of our sites, you think here with Oxboro, where they, they added this building with a drive-through, they could potentially have another business with a drive-through. Or Southtown, where they take up an entire three blocks, you could potentially add another business in there with a drive-through, and so just recognizing that the size of the site, it's more about the design of the drive-through, not the number of drive-throughs per site. And then, Item G, this is, we, some properties are not platted in our kind of modern standard with block and lot requirements, and as new developments happen, we kind of, we require properties to be platted in this way. So, there's not a lot that are not platted, but it does happen from time to time that we require the lot to be platted. But in some situations, it might be a very minor, very small addition or minor project that it doesn't warrant all the cost and extra bureaucracy to do that, that plating exercise. So, we do have some exemptions already for when you don't need to plat, and this would just be adding a situation where if it's a very small addition, under 1,000 square feet, you would be exempt from that plating requirement. If you went above that, then you would have to provide that. You would still be required to get your lot platted and get it surveyed and all the steps that go involved with that. So with that, I can open it up for questions. We have, I went through Items G through M. If we have questions for these other items, A through F, I do have slides prepared. Just from a logistical standpoint, we'll have you do two different motions. For Items A through F, I have a motion, and then I am G through M, I have a motion. And if, for some reason, you think you're going to vote no on a certain, one of the ordinances, please bring that up, and we can separate that motion out. I have separate individual motions for the different ordinances as well, just in case. So from that, I will open it up for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Palermo. Council, any questions on the second half, the substantive items, G through M? Anybody have questions on any of those items? Does anybody have questions on Items A through F? Councilmember Nelson?
Thanks, Mayor. I actually had a question on H, that the drive-through lanes would be limited to one per building. I have seen other places that sometimes have drive-through lanes that are multiple drive-through lanes. I've seen a number of McDonald's locations and things that do it. So how would that be impacted if you can only have one per building?
Mr. Palermo, and I agree, Councilmember, you look at bank drive-throughs, they're typically in one drive-through lane.
That's a much better example than McDonald's. I'm going to go bank.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson. Yep. So, this is only applicable in certain zoning districts, so the B4, C3, and C5, and LX zoning district, so those are our mixed-use zoning districts, where we do have these extra requirements. These are, you know, Penn American think, or the station area here where we have the bank that's just completed, they have a single drive-through lane, because we're trying to create a more dense walkable environment where the buildings are activating the streets. So it's not all property, so B2 wouldn't be follow, wouldn't fall under this. B2 is our general business zoning district where you'll typically find the McDonald's. But in those kind of high transit areas, walkability, where we're trying to encourage, that's where that limitation kind of comes in. And we're not outright banning drive-throughs, but we do want them designed in a way that allows people to enter the building. So, this is an example recently here at 98th and Lyndale, next to, this is the Duluth Trading here, where they actually designed their drive-through to kind of loop on the side of the building, rather than, I think their original design would have just gone around the building. But this way, it allows people now to enter directly from the sidewalk into the building, and they don't have to worry about dodging that, that drive-through, or trying to go through the drive-through to get into the building. But, Long, when it answers, it's only in those kind of high-intensity mixed-use districts that this would be applicable.
If I could just quickly follow up?
Please.
Because I believe there is a McDonald's on Lyndale. It's probably a bank too, but, and I believe it has two lanes.
Yes, so, I'm--
We'll call that one and a half.
Yep, I'm trying to remember where on Lyndale, but that would be Zone B2. So, B4, there's a little bit that we rezoned here by 98th and Lyndale. It's only a few of the properties nearest the station that we did that. C3, C5, that's Penn and American district, where that exists, and LX is kind of south loop. It's really along those high transit areas where we see those zoning districts, whereas most of our commercial is that B2 zoning district, which wouldn't have this restriction. And again, this is already existing, this is already how we've been applying the code. This is just a clarification for readability's sake. So, we've been applying this for, I'm not entirely sure when it was changed, but I've been here five years, and I know it's been here at least those five years, so I think it's more 10 to 15 years we've had this requirement.
Thank you for the clarifications, I appreciate it.
Councilmember Lohman?
D, the Clearview Triangle, was that just, just an addition there, or is it in other parts of the code? I just, you know, I see it just as a cleanup piece, but just help me understand that piece.
Yep. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Lohman, so, this is not adding any new language or how we apply the code. We talked about the Clearview Triangle in several spots throughout the code, in Chapter 1921, and Chapter 17. You find it everywhere, but it, there wasn't a singular definition anywhere, so this would be adding a singular definition, so that when we're talking about Clearview Triangle throughout, we can kind of point to it. And in fact, there was a spot in our sign code where it had a more spelled-out definition in this graphic, and it just seemed kind of odd to have it in the sign code when it, our traffic section also talks about it. So this is really just kind of cleaning it up and finding a point of reference in our definition section.
Thank you, that's all I needed.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Also, on the Clearview Triangle, in terms of looking at this, I know that I am currently working with a association that has a concern about this in terms of their fence height, and the, how this Clearview Triangle interplays with setbacks on a smaller lot situation on a corner where there's a side yard and a, actually backyard, and how all of those things interplay. And so, I do have a little bit of concern about this one, not in general, but in terms of a very specific impact to a candidly fairly unique development that has much smaller lots than most of the community, and the, in terms of what they can put in for a monument and signage for the community, and fencing and things like that, that by the time you get down to our current code, the backyard for those impacted properties is like, you got to put the fence at their house, and just a small part of their backyard, and then what I think most of us would consider their backyard is outside of the fence. And, so I don't know if this will impact that or not, I guess, I think that's the question I have.
Mr. Palermo?
Yep, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson. Unfortunately, I think this wouldn't really change the situation, I think they would still be in that difficult situation. I will say, what the Clearview Triangle does, is defined, is that 15 feet from the intersection, but, and it goes up to three feet in height, so you can have some blockage, but yeah, that three feet, and as you can imagine, it's really meant to make, for safety reasons, as a pedestrian might be walking, you want to be able to see them, or a car coming at an intersection, you want to be able to see them with enough time to be able to stop at the intersection, so that, that's why that exists. But I don't think it would be clearing up that problem. It is one of those difficult situations, sorry.
Okay. No, and I appreciate that, and to my understanding of the specifics, it's, it's more of the setback in the heights of fencing, but I just want to make sure this wouldn't also impact that or change that situation. So I think the, the other issue, we can have further conversations about at another time.
Council, any additional questions on either grouping, either A through F or G through M? Hearing none, I will open this public hearing. This is a public hearing, Item 4.1, regarding the city's annual miscellaneous issues ordinances, where you do cleanups and clarifications, and some more substantive changes on a few of our, of our ordinances in city code. Leah, do we have anyone on the phone who would like to speak to Item 4.1?
We currently don't have anyone on the phone line, Mr. Mayor. You may continue.
Thank you. Anyone in the council chambers wish to speak to Item 4.1 this evening? Last call. Council, we've got no one on the phone, no one coming forward in the chambers. I would look for a motion to close Item 4.1, the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Lohman, to close the public hearing on Item 4.1. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify-- All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Counsel, any additional questions or comments on the presentation by Mr. Palermo on the, on the issues, the miscellaneous issues ordinances and the cleanups? Seeing no questions, no comments? Counsel, I'd look for action on this. And as Mr. Palermo said, if we could break that into two different chunks, the A through the F and the G through M motions, if we could.
Mayor, I'm happy to take A through F.
Councilmember Martin?
Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinances, updating references, clarifying pet services does not include general sales, updating language pertaining to residential care facilities, defining ClearView triangle area, clarifying that daycare facilities are permitted as accessory, as accessory or conditional use, and amending the maximum size of private stables, thereby amending chapters 19 and 21 of the city code.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Loman, to adopt the ordinances and updating the ordinances as stated for items A through F. Hearing no further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Martin, would you like to take a crack at items G through M as well?
Sure thing.
Please.
Mayor, I will move that we adopt ordinances exempting properties from plating for new buildings and building additions that do not exceed 1,000 square feet, clarifying drive-through requirements in the B four, C three, C five, and LX zoning districts, clarifying that window film coverings are restricted, clarifying circular driveway requirements, allowing dog runs to encroach into required landscape yards, exempting temporary leasing signs from permit requirements, requiring private sidewalk connections for new uses without new development or significant redevelopment, thereby amending chapters 17, 19, 21, and 22 of the city code.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Loman, to adopt the ordinance, clarifying and updating items G through M in item 4.1 this evening. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. And Councilmember Martin, summary publication, if you could, please.
Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing summary publication of the ordinances, items A through M, amending chapters 17, 19, 21, and 22 of the city code as adopted by the city council on May 9, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Loman for summary publication on item 4.1. No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Palermo. Appreciate it. Appreciate cleaning that up and appreciate your coming back for a second try at this. I'm glad we got to it this time.
No problem. Thank you.
Moving on to item 4.2 on our agenda, this is the second public hearing. This would be for a tax increment financing for development at 8200 Humboldt Avenue South. And Erica Coleman from our community development, and I believe you've got an additional person with you as well, Michaela, that's what I thought, is going to be presenting as well. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I do have a presentation for you this evening. And before you today is a request of approval for a resolution approving the 8200 Humboldt redevelopment project area, approving the redevelopment plan therefore, establishing the 8200 Humboldt Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment District, and approving a tax increment financing plan therefore. Thank you. Next slide. So I wanted to start out with just showing renderings of the project that is being proposed by Enclave Development at 8200 Humboldt Avenue South. This property is currently, has a large office building on it that is substandard. Next slide. So the proposed development will include 149 units mixed income with 14 units affordable at 50% AMI. That is 9%, however, it is deeper affordability than the minimum requirement of the OHL, which is 60%. That 50% AMI breakdown is seven efficiency units, three one bedrooms, three two bedrooms, and one three bedroom. There will be 224 parking spaces. That includes 167 of underground parking as well as 67 of surface parking. The OHL incentives that were applied for and received are density bonus, height bonus, parking stall reduction, alternative exterior materials allowance, storage space reduction, and a request for tax increment financing on which we are here this evening, with a total development cost estimate of a little bit over $43 million. Next slide. So what is tax increment financing, or better known as TIF? It is a method of capturing tax-based growth resulting from new development, the increment captured to pay for public costs and TIF-eligible costs related to the development. It is a fixed term for capture, then the new development capacity is added to the existing tax base, and property owners within TIF districts pay taxes like all property owners. Next slide. So this is just a, an example of how it works. As you can see, towards the bottom left, the base value, normal taxes broken up between the city, county, school district, and other taxing jurisdictions. As the property value increases, which is what happens when there is new development, the increment is captured and broken up between the city, county, and school district. Next slide. So statutory findings to approve the TIF district pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 469.175 subdivision, subdivision three, the city needs to make certain findings that include the following. Next slide. That the TIF district qualifies as a redevelopment district. It is found that at least 70% of the area of the parcels in this TIF district is occupied by buildings, streets, utilities, paved or gravel parking lots, or other similar structures. And more than 50% of the buildings in the TIF district, not including outbuildings, are structurally substandard to a degree requiring substantial renovation or clearance. There's one building, over 50%, it does pass this test. The second one is the proposed development, in the opinion of the city, would not reasonably be expected to occur solely through private investment within the reasonably foreseeable future. This is known as the but-for test. The proposed development would not occur but for the use of tax increment financing. That is also true due to the cost to demo and remove the substandard building that is currently there. Next, the TIF plan will afford maximum opportunity consistent with the sound needs of the city as a whole for development of the project area by private enterprise, and the TIF plan conforms with the general plans for the development of the city as a whole. Both of these have been found to be true. Next slide. So forward 2040, our comprehensive plan. So on April 14, 2022, the Planning Commission did adopt a resolution confirming that the proposed redevelopment plan and TIF plan are consistent with the comprehensive plan. Specifically, goal number two, provide a range of housing choices, which strategy 2.2, identify locations and opportunities for new housing and mixed-use developments, which this will be. And goal three, provide affordable housing to serve local demand. Strategy 3.2, pursue multiple methods to reduce housing costs. And strategy 3.3, work toward reaching regional allocation of our 842 additional units of affordable households. So this meets that with the 50% AMI units that we will be providing. Next slide. I just wanted to give you a brief history of the timeline that has occurred and that is taking place right now. Like I said, the Planning Commission did recommend, excuse me, did approve the resolution that the comprehensive plan map amendment rezone the RDP and the FDP. City council heard, had a public hearing and approved the Planning Commission's recommendation. In March, the HRA board approved a development agreement and all necessary documentation with the developers for this development, redevelopment. In April, the Planning Commission adopted a resolution confirming that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the HRA board considered adoption of resolution approving redevelopment project area and plan and establishing tax increment financing district and plan, all of which were included in the agenda packet, the resolution of support from the HRA board, and the resolution from the Planning Commission. Here we are before you today, May, at the city council public hearing, and considering approval of redevelopment project area and plan and establishing tax increment financing district and plan. Pending all approvals, it is expected fall 2022 for demolition of the existing structure and new construction start. Next slide. I have this slide here. If you have any questions, this is a public hearing and a suggested motion.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Thank you, as always, for your explanation of tax increment financing. It is very helpful to hear that every time. It's very helpful to hear it, and I know from the general public perspective, it's helpful to better understand tax increment financing. We have Michaela.
Hewitt.
Hewitt from Baker Tilly here with us this evening as well. Is there anything you'd like to add to the, the presentation?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I do not. I think Ms. Coleman did a very good job outlining the project and the process for which you're here tonight. Maybe the only thing I will add is from the financial feasibility and analysis side, this project was very, very thin lines. There's a lot of work with the developer to come up with the feasible plan, and it does meet the but-for test as a result of that financial feasibility piece.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions of Ms. Coleman or Ms. Hewitt this evening? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Could you pull up the presentation again quick? And could you go back to the, excuse me, the slide that details the, the parking spaces? That's the one. 167 plus 67 is 234.
Then it's a typo.
Okay.
Thank you for noticing my typo.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Councilmember DeLisandro and then Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if this is a question for you, Ms. Coleman, or if Ms. Hewitt is a better person to answer the question, but the remarks she made kind of indicated here that, that a lot of work had to be done to kind of get this thing kind of organized. And so I'm curious, you know, when, when this first came up, I know that we talked a little bit about the potential because of the neighborhood and where it is, that, you know, considering a mixed, a mixed-use option, or where, where there would be some retail or some, you know, service or something like that that would add some potential value as well as potential usability to the, to the intersection. I'm just curious if, if that was part of the conversation that you all went through when you were trying to work through the feasibility analysis of, of the place and whether or not that was considered and thrown out for, you know, some good reasons or whatever. And, and if you do have anything you could share on that, I'd love to hear about it.
Thank you, councilmember. Very early on, it was talked about. One of the things, when this project first was presented to the city, it was actually going to be a payment in lieu. So a payment to Affordable Housing Trust Fund that was not going to include affordability. However, the OHL incentives that were used were needed, and you can't use the OHL incentives without providing affordable housing. And so after many renditions of going back and forth with the developer, who really wanted to redevelop this site and work with us, we came about with the housing development only.
I see.
Michaela, did you have anything to add to that?
No, you're, you are correct. And I think the other, you know, the other part of the structuring that we were working with is, is how much tax increment was pledged to the development with a higher percentage in the earlier years and a reduced percentage in the later years to assist with the financial cash flow, but still try to meet the HRA and city's objectives of retaining some funding for potential other option, pooling options in the future. And we were able to reduce the 9% units from 60% down to, to 50%, and that was an additional goal that we were able to achieve.
Thanks. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions. Can you help me understand the determination of structurally substandard? What, what about the building is substandard? And my understanding, it's an office building and there are current tenants in there. Do we know what the vacancy rate is within the building?
Thank you, councilmember. I cannot recall the vacancy rate off the top of my head, but I will say due to the termination of substandard, it was a blight assessment completed by an outside firm that established multiple high-cost items as to how and why the building is substandard and actually blighted, and why it would be in the best interest to demolish the building.
Okay. Thank you. And then the other one is, if I understand correctly, the TIF is about 15 million and the overall project is about 45 million, so that's about a third. How does that compare to other projects? Particularly, I know we've looked at this in the South Loop, but I know there's other projects in the Penn American not too far from there. Do we know how that compares to the city's contribution in those projects?
Michaela, would you like to take that one first?
Yep, I can, I can speak to, so the level of tax increment assistance that they are receiving is that the total increment, the total budget of the TIF plan is about 15 million. The actual value of the TIF that, that the developer is receiving is, is 6.9 million. So of the total 43 million dollar budget, 6.9 million is what would be provided as assistance. And then the remainder of the increment is for, within the budget, is for administrative other improvements and then interest payable on the developer obligation. As far as the TIF, the overall TIF capacity, I know we, we have a spreadsheet that has that listing of how it compares, and I was going to look, see if I could find that.
I do want to add, councilmember, that in consideration of TIF applications, it is a effort that includes our CFO. And so this is within line with other projects in terms of comparison, in terms of the amount of TIF assistance that is requested and to be offered.
That's all I have for right now, so, yeah.
Very good. Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of clarifying things. I was looking at the projected tax increment report, and, and I guess the entire report in part said the authority currently plans to finance the site improvements or development costs through the pay-as-you-go notes, but reserves the right to issue bonds in any form. So is that a decision that gets made by the HRA? Or does that come back to the city council? Or, I guess I'm just curious what that decision-making looks like.
Michaela?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that is language in reference in the TIF plan that is, that is, this is structured as a pay-as-you-go note. The agreement has already been adopted or approved by, by the HRA board. So this is presented as pay-as-you-go. The language in the tax increment plan that is being referenced, this is, any kind of financial obligation from the city is considered a bond within the definition of the tax increment statute. So this language represents the statutory requirements of the tax increment district, but this is structured as pay-as-you-go developer obligation, and, and the developer is financing all the costs upfront.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I was a little confused. And then my second question is around the pooling percentage of 10%. So does that pooled money then go into the Gateway District kind of pooled fund? Or how, what is the pool, where does that money go, I guess, in terms of the pooling?
Thank you, councilmembers. So I want to say it's over the full amount of years, it's 20% of pooled that would come back. And pooled TIF is something that has been identified to as a long-term plan to help fund the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Oh, got it, okay.
So long-term, to use for other redevelopment projects.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, because I was assuming it might be Gateway, but then I also knew we had the funds, so I wasn't sure about that. So those were my only two questions. Thank you.
Could I add on to that quick? Sorry. Just, and to clarify, right, so right now, we were, we were structuring this as more of a long-term investment, and that's why, you know, in the later years, so the average is 20% over the life of the tax increment district. Potential uses of those, those funds have not been discussed or considered, but the use of those dollars would have to be within a defined project area. So the, the use of those funds in the future and the decision will in part drive where the funds are spent and how they're, they're spent. But right now, we wanted to try to earmark some flexibility for that future use.
Councilmember Loman?
Thank you for this presentation. I wanted to just comment that I had one question. I appreciate the, we need to always make sure that folks understand what tax increment finance means. Easy to misunderstand that that's not, you know, free tax dollars or other things. If I don't have my mask on, so you'd see that. But I appreciate that every time we talk about tax increment finance and we clarify that. But I appreciate that every time we talk about tax increment finance, we clarify that. And I know, Mayor, you've done that many times. So when we look at the affordability that we get here with those units that were listed here, how many years of affordability do we get? And I don't want to say how many years are we buying of this, but, you know, we listed those units. I can't remember how many units it was up there, but how many, how many years of affordability do we get with those units that come with this?
Thank you, Councilmember. Twenty-six years.
And then?
The full term of the TIF.
The full term of the TIF. And so then after those twenty-six years are done, what needs to be done to up that? Is there a way that the city can ensure that? I know that when we talk about no one, that type of thing, of preserving long-term, how does that happen? So do those twenty-six units then revert back to marketability? Just help me understand that, because that's part of the rationale and the reason for doing this particular project.
Michaela?
Mayor, members of the council, I think that's a really good question. You know, I think it's, and Erica, I thought, I thought the agreement was up to thirty years, but I could be wrong. I can't remember if it was twenty. But we didn't discuss what the plan would be for those units after, you know, after whether it would be an additional, you know, whether it be an additional incentive or what other, you know, what other agreement would be entered into with the developer. But, you know, my understanding is those units would be, you know, the tenants would still remain. It would, they wouldn't be kicked out per se. It would just be what the long-term plan is to maintain those affordable units, and I don't think that's been defined at this point.
It's all, if I could, Mayor, and I'm assuming, I'm making this assumption, and, but I think it's worth asking, have we done everything that we can do under the law to try to extend that term as long as possible, understanding that those families and people that utilize those units, you know, at twenty-six years? I mean, that's, I mean, that's, I've been in the city longer than twenty-six years, so hopefully you wouldn't stay, you know, in an affordable unit over that full term. But, you know, we are, you know, we are investing in this, and so as long as we can get those terms, is there anything we can do to extend that? Have we done everything that's possible to try to get that term as far as we can get?
Thank you, Councilmember. At the present time, we have done everything we can possibly do to get as long of a possible period of affordability in this development.
Counsel, anything additional? Any additional questions? If not, this is a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing tonight on item 4.2. It's a public hearing regarding the tax increment financing plan for development at 8200 Humboldt Avenue South. Is there anyone in the council chambers who wishes to speak to item 4.2 at this public Anyone in the council chambers? Leia, do we have anyone on the phone who wishes to speak to item 4.2?
We still don't have anyone on the phone line, sir. You may continue.
Thank you. Last call for anyone? Seeing no one coming forward to speak to item 4.2 and having no one on the phone line, counsel, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.2.
So moved. Second?
Motion by Councilmember Coulter, second by Councilmember DeLisandro to close the public hearing on item 4.2. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero to close the public hearing. Counsel, any additional questions or discussion on this? Some good questions about length and applicability and so on. I appreciate those. Do we have any addition, anything additional for either Ms. Coleman or Ms. Hewitt on this one? Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess the only thing I would say is, although we can't extend the length on this, these apartments specifically, to my question before around the pooling, I mean, we are putting right aside resources, though, for other units to be built into the future. So it isn't like a, it's just about this project. There is kind of a more longer-term approach to.
You are correct. Anything additional, counsel? Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I appreciate that staff and developer work to get down below sixty percent AMI on those affordable units. I know that's something we've talked about a number of times. Second of all, I would, as always, look for an opportunity for homeownership opportunities. I know that's tremendously difficult to do, and I did talk with the developer about it previously, so they're aware of that feedback as well. I want to be honest that I continue to be frustrated with the amount of TIF it takes to get a project to go. I mean, we're looking at fifteen million dollars for a hundred and fifty units. It's a hundred thousand dollars a unit to get housing. We have fourteen units that are affordable. It's a million dollars per unit to do that. And I know this is coming out of the TIF, and this is money we wouldn't get because it's not going to redevelopment, and so I get the but-for test, and I understand that. It's not money we would get otherwise. But the cost of housing is insane, you know, and something needs to be done about that. And, you know, Bloomington, you know, kudos to you, Mayor, kudos to my colleagues here and our staff, is leading the way on this and meeting our goals and driving that and doing it. And I'm just frustrated other communities aren't doing more. The legislature isn't doing more to make this not so darn expensive, because but for the legislator fixing our broken housing system, we could have somebody come in and build units that increased our tax base and provided housing people can afford to live in. And instead, it's being borne by Bloomington to do this. And I'm frustrated about that. I'm very frustrated about that. I think this is a great project. I think it'll provide really nice housing for people. I think the tools are there for us to do it, and I think, you know, barring changes somewhere else, nothing else is going to happen with this property, and we'll continue to collect the same amount of little bit of property taxes we would have otherwise. So it's not coming out of our pockets to do this, but it's coming out of our future because our housing system, as we've talked about, it's in crisis. And so, thank you for your work. I very much appreciate it.
And I appreciate your frustration, Councilmember Nelson. You know I share it, and I get fully the whole notion of land, labor, lumber, driving the cost of it, but there's got to be a way that we can find a way past this from a regional standpoint, not city by city, not Bloomington leading the way, hoping others follow, on a regional and a statewide basis that it should happen. Councilmember Coulter and then Councilmember DeLisandro. Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to echo Councilmember Nelson's comments. I think it feels to me a lot of our efforts at the city level on affordable housing, and they've been good, they've been really good. I think we've made incredible progress in my time on the council, but it feels often like what we're doing is just downstream from addressing the real issues that are at the heart of this crisis. And, I mean, it's been a full-on crisis for a number of years. And so I think I would agree that it's not only, it requires action not only at the state level, but I think at the federal level. It's been, I don't even know how long since there's been a serious effort, serious investment at the federal level in affordable housing. And so I think it's going to take really all of us rolling up our sleeves and just thinking creatively about the solution. I was also prepared to make a motion, but I will, Councilmember DeLisandro.
Why don't you hold on one second, and we'll get back to you. Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, it's just the reason why I keep asking about the ability for us to develop these properties with other uses in mind, simply to kind of provide some of the flexibility we need. You know, a coffee shop going in there contributes to local sales tax potentially. I mean, you get, you get some other benefits for the, for the community when you are keeping those things in mind as we, as we go forward. And that's why I keep asking the question, can we, maybe there's another way to incentivize, I don't know, but, you know, to kind of, and think about that more comprehensively if we're gonna, if, and I live right there, so I know, I see it every day, I know exactly what you're talking about. It's going to be an improvement. I agree completely with, with, with your assessment that it's the right thing to do. But with, with that in mind, you know, we're solving a short, I don't want, twenty-six years doesn't sound like a short term. I get it, it's a generation, and that's meaningful for people. But, you know, once that building is not, you know, not there, once that building is there for twenty-five years, you know, what have we not, what do we don't have in it, in that same area becomes a question for me, right? Because those people have to go across thirty-five or down, you know, they don't necessarily get an amenity or two, and that starts to create a neighborhood around that when we don't make space for it. And so I don't, you know, it's another way of, I guess, saying the same frustration that you all are saying, so I'll keep it short. But maybe there's something we need to think about doing with, going forward if we can't get relief in these other places, to kind of think about the way we approach this, especially since we're doing such a good job of getting very close to the targets we set for ourselves around at least, you know, the higher levels of affordability. I don't know. That's it, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anything else to add, counsel? Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one last thing to add. I agree with all that's been said, but this issue around affordable housing did come up in a conversation that I had last week with somebody who asked me, like, why do we keep building all of this affordable housing? Which, of course, I love this project because it's mixed, it's mixed income. But then I always like to make the point that our area median income, is it around eighty thousand right now?
Our area median income is about eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine.
Thousand, as HUD has released their new limits, and a median income for a Minnesota household of four is a hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred dollars.
So what would be, so these units at fifty percent AMI would be somebody who's making fifty, or a household that's bringing in, what was that?
Well, eighty-nine divided by two is forty-four and a half.
But if we go with the HUD definition, which, what did you say it was?
A family of four, it is about eighty-nine thousand dollars at eighty percent, so we're looking at over sixty thousand for fifty percent AMI.
I mean, those are, I mean, that's still a very decent income for individuals. And so if that's what it takes to afford units at this point, I mean, it's, it speaks again to the crisis that we're in. But again, I just want to reiterate for those who are watching across Bloomington that when we're talking about affordable housing, we're talking about people who are, families who are still bringing in fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars a year. That's who we're building these for at this point, and we still do need to focus on these deeply affordable units because we haven't really made a dent there. And so just wanted to make that point. Thank you so much for your leadership in the city and all the work that you're doing and your team is doing. Really, really appreciate it. And I also want to echo that I really love that you always give an explanation of TIF. Love it.
Thank you.
And I agree, Councilmember Carter, to frame this as housing that people can afford as opposed to affordable housing. Affordable housing comes with all kinds of baggage with it, and I, whatever, but this is housing that people can afford, housing that people who work in our community can afford, housing that our first-year teachers can afford, housing that people in our hospitality industry can afford. And if you put it in that context and look at it, you know, frame it up in that way, it changes the conversation completely, because I have similar conversations with people who ask me the same questions. And so it's, it's just a different way of looking at it, hoping they understand. Councilmember Coulter.
Mayor, I will move to adopt a resolution approving the 8200 Humboldt redevelopment project area, approving the redevelopment plan therefore, establishing the 8200 Humboldt Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment District, and approving a tax increment financing plan therefore.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Coulter, second by Councilmember Carter, to adopt, approve the resolution approving the 8200 Humboldt Avenue redevelopment project area. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Ms. Hewitt, Ms. Coleman, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
We will move on to our final public hearing of the evening. This is item 4.3. This is a hearing regarding an alcohol license violation at the Fraternal Order of Eagles. And what I would like to do is kind of lay this all out, how we're going to approach this, as Mr. Zuniga is at the podium already. Thank you for doing this. Unless I'm going to step on your toes here, I was going to just lay out kind of how we're going to go through all this, if I could, or?
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Obviously, we're going to open the hearing up. We're going to hear a staff report. Mr. Zuniga, our deputy city attorney, is going to go, we'll give him about ten minutes. And then we're going to listen, we're going to hear from the license holder, we're going to give an equal ten minutes to the council for the license holder and then the president of the license holder, take questions from the city council. We're going to start with questions of the city council. We'll ask for the questions of the license holder, city of Bloomington. We'll break this down, basically, and we'll go through it. We'll close the public hearing, and then we'll do a city council discussion and ultimately a roll call vote on this. And a reminder, once again, Mr. Zuniga is going to remind us, this is a bit of a unique hearing that we're having this evening, where we're in our, the process that we're in is a bit different, that we're doing our, I think it's quasi-judicial. I was going to say semi-judicial, and I knew that wasn't right, but our quasi-judicial role. So, Mr. Zuniga.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So we're here for alleged alcohol beverage license violation by the Fraternal Order of the Eagles, number 3208. Before I get started on the facts, just a couple of procedural issues that I wanted to go over with you. Bloomington City Code Section 13.40 requires this hearing before the city council can revoke or suspend or issue any civil penalties for any license violations, so that's why we're here. The code also requires that the license holder receive at least eight days' notice of the hearing as well as the violation or notice of violations. On April thirteenth of this year, I mailed notice of the violations and notice of the hearing to the license holder. Again, followed up with an email to the license holder on April twenty-sixth. In both communications, I offered to meet with the license holder to see if we could agree to stipulate to the facts of the alleged violations. On April twenty-eighth, I did meet with the license holder as well as their attorney. The license holder and their attorney are present here today. At that meeting, we did agree and stipulate to the facts. I will go over the stipulated facts, but as the mayor mentioned, this is a quasi-judicial hearing, so we, you do have to base your decision on substantial evidence. I believe we do have the substantial evidence for the three license violations. The mayor also talked about affording due process rights to the license holder and having the license holder the ability to present any information or any additional evidence that they would like to present to you. And so as the mayor said, they will have that opportunity. So the license holder, I will refer to my, either as the license holder or the Eagles, they currently hold an on-sale club intoxicating liquor license for two hundred to five hundred members. And the license restricts alcohol sales and consumptions, and consumption to club members and guests of club members only. On March third of this year, the Bloomington Ridgefield Sun Current published an article about the Day Tripper Theater and the Day Tripper's leased space from the Eagles. It talked about how the theater kind of managed to survive throughout the pandemic, but what the article also included was information about the shows that they had at the Eagles. And it mentioned that full, full bar service was available. So city staff believed that this potentially was a violation of their license. So in response to the article, three Bloomington police detectives went out to the Eagles on March eighteenth. After arriving at the licensed premises, they observed signs saying that doors shouldn't be propped open, members, you know, don't leave the door open, guests need to be buzzed in. But the detectives observed the door wide open, they observed people walking in and out of the establishment. And so the three detectives walked into the Eagles, they sat down in the bar area. At separate times, each detective walked up to the bar, ordered, and were served alcoholic beverages. This was a violation of the Eagles license, and they stipulated to that. The stipulation can be found in Exhibit A of the packet. As part of our meeting with the Eagles on April twenty-eighth, what we also did is we agreed to a proposed recommendation to the city council on what the suspension and/or civil penalty would be. Since there are three violations, we have agreed on seven-day suspension for each violation, which would total twenty-one consecutive days, as well as a thousand-dollar fine for each violation for a total of three thousand dollars, or three thousand-dollar civil penalty. So with that, I will let the Eagles presenting information for you.
Thank you, Mr. Zuniga.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Jim Kempeinen, K-E-M-P-A-I-N-E-N, and I'm representing the Eagles Club, which And I'm representing the Eagles Club, which the president is here, right, standing right next to me, and that's Linda Richter. What I do want to add is that we did enter the stipulation. We had an opportunity to talk with the city attorney. And we met there and talked about the stipulation and the potential consequences of something like this would happen. And we did enter that stipulation that was signed by Ms. Richter as the president on behalf of the Eagles. Now included in there are some mitigation factors that we would like to expand on or emphasize some. What about the tremendous charity work that they do? And also the fact that they are in the application for a full license, which is public license, as I understand it. And that that application is working through the process now. And one additional factor that that application was the potential additional insurance coverage that the Eagles would have to have. So that was something that we were going to add to the record. I don't think it's in there. Yeah, we would just like to add that quote to indicate that they're in the full process of going through a new application for a full liquor license. So with that being said, I would turn it over to Ms. Richter, who would emphasize some of the details.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I just want to let you know that we take this seriously. And as this process has gone on, I've been president of the Eagles for, this will be now my seventh term oncoming. As today was elections, I was ran uncontested, so I get another year. So there's continuity and everything that's going to happen going forward. As soon as I found out about this article that was in the Bloomington Current, which I've been a Bloomington resident for fifty-six years. So when I found out about it on March third, I immediately spoke with Mr. Junker and, or he spoke with me. And I gave him details that I had no record, or I was not aware of this article coming out. And so as soon as we discussed what I knew about it, which was nothing other than what I ended up reading the next day, I right away went to the club. I spoke with Mr. Kinsey of the Day Trippers. I told him flat out that he could not, no longer come in to the establishment with any customers trying to buy liquor or drinks. I immediately let all the bartenders know that no liquor would be served to any of the Day Trippers. So they took action as well as our other staff. So kind of, I was disappointed in the delay of receiving this certified letter. I would have been on this as soon as I received the letter, which I did, and I received it the twenty-fifth of April. Somehow I, well, I actually asked the mailman today why it took so long that I got it because nobody ever signed for it that we know of. We don't recognize the signature. So as soon as I did that, I did call the city attorney. So after that all happened, we took immediate action as far as the door being propped open. I know that that was a band night and usually when the band does come in, they'll prop that door open to bring their equipment in. It should be the unpropped after they bring everything in. Obviously, it wasn't. And from the time that the band starts at eight o'clock, it was nine o'clock PM when the officers came in. So yes, the door typically is always closed and we do buzz in. We have membership cards. The bartenders are supposed to ask for membership cards and if you have guests. And so it appears that that didn't happen. But we, what we did immediately after all that happened is we post somebody at the door now because we do. But in the past, we had somebody that was a paid employee that would sit there and check the membership cards when people came in for bigger events and made them sign in as well as sign in their guests. So a couple of years before COVID, we had to take and get rid of that position. And then after we've gone through all the COVID, we just haven't had the opportunity to bring that position back. So our business is run by officers and trustees that are voted in. They're not paid positions. We have twenty-three employees. I mean, we're, we're a small group, but we're a large business and we do a lot for the community. We've given grand amounts of money to our community. It was over a hundred thousand dollars last year. Just that we gave to community, mostly the schools that we have around here. We're very glad that we're going to be going public and we're already looking forward to the, what we can do outside of the community with this, being our location is so close to the river bottoms there of where the new Cedar, or the old Cedar Avenue Bridge has been redeveloped. And so we're looking forward to taking and working really hard to do what we can as a small business to take and work with that and go forward. We have canceled all band entertainment going forward until we get word on a public liquor license. So that will no longer happen. We've already been checking everybody's cards and their guests as every, we have the sign-in book. And the one thing is, is by complying with all this, our business is really going to take a little bit of a revenue hit. And so we're doing our best and, you know, we're going to have employees that are potentially going to be out of work unfortunately. And it's just a really difficult thing. And so we're ready to move forward and do what we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this working? No.
I, yeah, either one. That'll be great, yes.
Just on a housekeeping matter, I'm not sure if, have you seen this yet? Okay. Is it okay if I submit it?
Sure.
Okay. I would just like to offer this as, as the evidence that they have pushed forward with their application for the full public. And this is the insurance quote, if we can add this to the record. Right here.
If we could get the overhead for just a moment, and if you just turn it and put it right on the City of Bloomington seal there, it's perfect.
Where's that? Oh, there it is.
There you go. All right. Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Done?
Anything, anything in additional?
No, Your Honor. No, not Your Honor, but you are there. Just to be in court. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Unless there's questions.
We'll get to you in just a moment. I think we'll start with questions from the council. Let's, let's start with the questions if we could with, to Mr. Zuniga or any law enforcement, just basically City of Bloomington, and then we'll make the switch and we'll, again, for due process, then we'll switch over to the, to the Eagles folks and talk to them and ask any specific questions we have there. So any specific questions for Mr. Zuniga that the council has? Councilmember Nelson.
Is there any past issues at the Eagles or violations on this that we're aware of?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, there are no histories of violations.
Okay. And then it sounded like after the article came out that Mr. Junker had a conversation with them. Was that before or after the violations or?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, that was before the detectives went to the Eagles.
Okay. So the violation was after they were aware of it?
That is correct.
And then do we know when the full license was applied for?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, I met with them on April twenty-eighth. And after meeting with me, they walked immediately downstairs and submitted the application.
Okay. So that was after.
Correct.
Violation. Okay. And will this have an impact on that full license?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, I think I would let Mr. Junker, as the issuing authority, conduct the investigation and he'll bring that forward to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had, I think, the same question that Councilmember Nelson did about prior violations. The other question that I, that I had, I guess we haven't really gotten to the substance of it, but it is, we are to look at these two instances as separate instances in the sense that the three particular violations that, that have been defined as evidenced by our law enforcement folks. And then the, the other, you know, Day Trippers article, is that intended to be, that's more hearsay, if you will, versus like the facts of the case? So I just want to make sure I'm, if I'm supposed to deal with them in combination or handle them separately in my mind?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, the Day Trippers incident is probably more of a background for you. How the city got notified of potential violations and what started the investigation. The standard to find a violation is substantial evidence. With respect to the Day Trippers, we don't believe we have the substantial evidence. It's more what I would call circumstantial evidence. And so that's why we are, when issuing any suspension or civil penalties, that's why we are going to rely on the, the three violations of the police, police officers and not the Day Trippers incident.
Okay. Were there, one other question, excuse me. What, are the, the law enforcement officials involved in the investigation? Are they, were they specialists in any kind of, you know, whether it's this kind of violation in the past or narcotics or anything like that? Were they part of any special investigation units or were they our patrol officers?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, it's my understanding that they are from the investigative unit at the police department. They, when they entered the Eagles, they were plainclothes detectives.
Thank you.
Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, the, the suspension, the seven days per violation, that's, I mean, I think you said this. I just want to make sure I heard it correctly. That's consecutive days rather than, rather than business days, correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Coulter, that is correct.
Thank you. And then the other question I have, and this may be something to follow up with Mr. Junker about, when folks apply for, because this, I mean, this is a, I think we could call it more of a specialty license. It's not your sort of run-of-the-mill on-sale liquor license. When they apply for this license, is there some sort of explanation about the, the more unique requirements, shall we say? Or, or what sets this, what sets this off from a more traditional on-sale liquor license?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, Councilmember Coulter, so they have a, what's called an on-sale club intoxicating liquor license. And so the restriction is that they can only sell or consume alcohol to club members or guests of club members. And so you heard the Eagles talk about a guest book. So steps that they've taken to ensure that they're only selling to, to their, their members or guests of their members. You also heard them talk about applying for what they call a public license. In our mind, that would be a full on-sale intoxicating liquor license, which would contain no restrictions. So any member of the public who's twenty-one or over could enter and purchase and consume alcohol.
Thank you. And then one follow-up, I mean, I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at then is that there's, the, sort of the implication with applying for this license is that there is an understanding as to how, how this, this club license is, is unique and different from the, the full on-sale license. Am I correct?
Right. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Coulter, that is the understanding. And then also as part of our alcoholic beverage code, it does lay out some of the factors that the issuing authority will take into account when reviewing an application. Right now, the code does limit it to really revocation of a license, and in this case, it would be a suspension. But I'll certainly defer to Mr. Junker as the issuing authority on, on what role this suspension would play in his recommendation to you to approve or deny the application.
Thank you.
Councilmember Loman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify just, just a few things here, just so I understand the completeness of all this here. So the, the Day Trippers, they are, are they an entity or a group? Just so I understand that, that piece?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Loman, it's our understanding, it's a theater company that does travel throughout the Twin Cities metro area conducting plays. In this particular instance, they lease space from the Eagles to conduct daytime matinee shows.
And just so from my understanding, I don't, I don't know the legal ramifications of the can, can entities or theater groups be members of, of these, of these groups? Or a member of the, pardon me to be clear, be a member of, for example, this Eagles Club?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Loman, yes, it's certainly possible that, that club members did attend these performances.
I'm sorry, not being clear, can entities be, the way that we understand it, be members of the, of the club?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Loman, I guess I would defer that question to the Eagles as far as what their membership requirements are.
Okay, that's fair. So my understanding is, is that only members and guests of those members can, as you stated prior, can be, consume alcohol on the premises?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Loman, that is correct.
Okay. So then there's three possible, there's members, guests, and then non-guests, right?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Loman, that's correct.
Thank you. And then I just wanted to be sure that the Eagles Club has fully stipulated to the full facts that have been proposed within the, the document here set forth from staff.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Loman, I did provide a draft of the stipulation to the Eagles council. They did have the opportunity to review it and Ms. Richter, as their president, did sign off on it.
Okay. So that's a full agreement with the stipulations that are within the piece.
That is correct.
And finally, I, I understand that there's a, basically a twenty-one day and a three thousand dollar fine. And is that consistent with what we have given other entities that have had a first-time violation?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Loman, so the, my research tells me that it is consistent with other license violations for anywhere from one to seven days for each violation. And so when we're looking at this particular case, there are three separate violations. And so that forms the basis of the twenty-one consecutive days as well as a three thousand dollar fine. And that is consistent throughout Minnesota case law.
Okay. And thank you for clarifying all those, that information.
Council, additional questions? Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick follow-up. So can you help me understand the number of violations? So if, if one officer went there and got served, that would be one violation, but three going at the same time together is three violations. If five had gone there, would that be five violations? I'm just trying to separate, I mean, it seems like either it's potentially one incident where multiple people got served or, you know, I guess, you know, part of the question is why, why send three people? Why not two? Why not, you know, why not one?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, so we based that off of the officers walking up to the bar at separate times and ordering alcoholic beverage and each were served separately. And so we, we counted that as three separate violations as opposed to one incident.
Okay. So they didn't walk up at the same time next to each other and each order a different drink? It was?
According to their police report, which is Exhibit B in the packet, they walked up separately.
Any additional questions, council? And so to be clear, the, the three offenses that we're talking about here were the three officers who were not checked at the door. The door was propped open. They were able to walk in. And each of them, sitting at the table, each of them went up to the bar individually at a separate time. Nobody was asked for a card or anything like that and they were, they were served alcohol. And they did, each of them did it. So those are the three violations we're talking about here.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Council, anything else? All right. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Zuniga. Mr. Kempenen and Ms. Richter. Council questions? Councilmember Nelson.
I'll add, I'll ask councilmember.
I'll add, I'll ask Councilmember Lohman's question for him. Are the day trippers a member? Or are, would they be allowed to be a member?
Mr. Kin, oh, sorry. Mr. Kinsey is a member, and he is the owner and director of the day trippers.
Okay. Is there any way to substantiate that the people that attended were his guests?
Ask them. I, I'm, I mean, I'm not, I'm not certain. So he has plays that are, I mean, he has a schedule of plays, so I, I cannot confirm or deny.
Okay, thank you.
And Councilmember Nelson, again, to clarify, the, the penalty here is not associated with the day trippers at all. This, this has to do with the three, the officers, the three officers who were there who went up individually. So it doesn't have to do with the day trippers. So. Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thanks for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So at risk of, I don't want to put words in your mouth, that, that's not my goal, but it, it seems to me that you have stipulated to the facts and that there was a violation. Is there, is there, in your mind, a, a problem with the proposed penalty for that? Meaning, meaning is, is the idea of a penalty in general problematic? Or is there a reason you would want to, us to substantially alter what seems to be a normal course of, of, of business for us, you know, for any violation of this kind? If, if there's anything that, that you would want us to do differently, I'd love to understand a little bit about the reasoning behind why you would want to, us to potentially, you know, exempt and/or modify what would be our normal course of business. If, if you can articulate that, I, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember. We know that we have a violation. We, the part that, I mean, we've never had a violation, and so we were expecting a fine. I think that's where we were a little thrown off, because a, a large fine would be something that we would have, I mean, we, we would like to have stipulated with that. As far as three violations, we've had, every sting that we've ever had, even back in the tobacco days, I mean, we passed every single one of them. But when they do those kinds of stings, they just send one person in, you know? So then when we found out that it was three officers, I mean, that was the first question I had. But it was what it was. So at the end of the day, I guess, my, my role as president is to oversee business operations, and then the officers and, or the trustees run the business. And then we have our employees. It's, it's the employees that I'm most concerned about, you know, in general. I mean, 21 days of a liquor license suspension, you know, I, I get it. But the passion is, you know, there's a small group of employees that are going to be unemployed for 21 days. And we would, it would be much more, I mean, we still, we would, we would rather pay a bigger fine than to see the suspension. So that's what I can put forward.
Follow-up question, if I may?
Please.
Thank you. Appreciate the candor. The, the, the services that, that you offer at, at the club, are they limited to the bar? Or do you have other services that you offer to your guests?
We do have services that are offered to the guests. I mean, we have, it's a, it's a bar restaurant and a social room. We do have a banquet room, which is, we lease that out. And if a member is leasing it out or signing a contract for it, then it's the members and their guests that are having the party that are there. So with that being said, I mean, the, the room has been used for, during the COVID, we were blessed to be able to do blood drives, and we worked with the city and the Red Cross on that. So we were the only organization that was able to offer that because of the banquet room we had. So that was a big plus. I mean, that room is something that we've been able to take and use to help with events and, and things that we've been able to give back.
So how, so how many of the employees that you mentioned, I think 23 you mentioned?
23 employees, yes.
Pardon me?
23 employees, correct.
How many of them would be not working during that suspension period?
Our gambling operations would potentially stay open, so over half of them.
Okay.
Yeah. So would be unemployed.
Right, right. So how, how many of them would be off work during that period?
Let's see, I'm trying to think of how many gambling employees we have. 12 gambling employees, so yeah, half.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Ms. Richter, I, I appreciate, things have been difficult the last couple of years. I, I know that. I, I get that entirely. And, and you said you're, you're in charge of the business operations.
Overseen.
Overseen the business operations. And what's, there's just a couple of things that give me pause here after you've said that and to, to think about that. And I know we're not judging basically on the day trippers, but the fact that you mentioned you didn't even realize the day trippers were, had, had bar service. I mean, that, that's a bit concerning.
No, 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 no. They didn't, they don't have bar service. And they do not have bar service. They have a catering service. And what they did is, there may have been some of the day tripper people that were coming to see the shows that came through from the banquet room into the social room to buy alcohol.
Okay, I appreciate that. But then for, in addition to controls issues, to, to have the door propped open, and I get it, it might have been the band loading, and I understand that.
Understand.
But to have the bartenders not checking cards at all, I mean, that's a significant controls issue. And you actually, your first time up here, you actually made the comment, something along the lines of that compliance is going to mean a significant revenue hit. Which is, is a concerning thing to hear, that if you, if you follow the rules that were laid out in your liquor license, it's going to mean a reduction in, in revenue. That tells me that part of your revenue is from non-compliant sources. Is that correct?
That is not correct. I mean, as, as far as not having the bands, you know, when we have the bands, we have members and their guests that come in for the bands. I mean, we base what, who we take and have for bands, or we try to on our membership basis and what they like, so.
So, but by compliance, when you said compliance, I, I guess I was assuming that meant complying with your liquor license in terms of, you know, making sure it's only members who are there, it's only members being served. Members are guests. I, I get that. So that, it, it was just something that, that, that's what I heard. And I wonder, will there be, has, has there been, have you seen or have you known of past non-compliance?
We do our best, let's put it that way. We do our best. If I, if I'm not there seeing an eye, a card's not being checked. I mean, it, I'm sure it's happened.
All right, thank you. Council, any additional questions? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to clarify that when I heard the comment you were talking to about compliance will impact, it was the compliance with the stipulations and the 21 days is what I heard would be impactful. Could, could you clarify, you're, you think that complying with the 21-day no liquor sales will be impacting your revenue, not compliance with the license?
Correct, yeah, noted, correct.
That, and Mayor, that's, that's how I heard it, so just, just for clarification there. And then I have one question with regards to something that got brought up, that we do the stings every year. How do we get in to do those? You have to be a member. How, how do they happen?
Well, they, they, the door wouldn't, if, the stings usually happen in daytime, but it doesn't make any difference. The door is, I want to say 99% always closed. The times that it's propped open is when, when they've had, you know, something to bring in, that we have to prop the door open.
Do we have any information from staff? Have they ever had a problem getting in?
That's, that's a good question, Councilmember. And I, I, I think it's unfair to look back at the chief because being here a whole five weeks now, I don't think he probably has an answer. But that's a, that's a, a good point and a good question. If, if we're able to do the compliance check, it's interesting how we get in, how our officers get in the establishment in the first place. Mr. Zuniga?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, I can't speak to how they get in. But when the police department does conduct our annual compliance checks, we only get notice of the violations. And so I will say that the day trippers hasn't been on that violations list, but I can't say how they get in there to do their compliance checks. I'm sorry, the Eagles?
Eagles, yes.
Yes.
Council, any additional questions of our friends from the Eagles?
I have a follow-up question first.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Is that okay? It, it's for staff, if that's okay?
For staff, okay. Let, let's finish off with the folks first, and then we'll follow up with the staff. Anything more for Ms. Richter? All right, great. Thank you much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers.
Mr. Zuniga, follow-up question for you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in the documentation that you provided, you indicated that the penalty for a violation, as acknowledged by the, the folks at the Eagles, could be up to 60-day suspension per violation and up to $2,000 per violation. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, that is correct. That comes from Section 13.40 in our city code.
And forgive me, since I don't have that memorized, is that, is that, is that provision a violation for any liquor license violation or specifically for a violation of this type of liquor license?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, it is for all violations that don't include serving to minors. Minors have a, a separate violation and, and fine process.
Okay, and I see. Okay, so that was, is going to be my third question. So, so what would, if you could provide an example, what would be potentially an example of a violation different from the one we're thinking about tonight, but would fall within the same category? Maybe for a public license, for example?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, off the top of my head, it could be violating, you know, the times of which alcohol could be sold. Or it could be displaying alcohol when service is not available.
Okay.
It could be, you know, refilling bottles with cheaper alcohol. Those could all be violations.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. As long as you're, you're up here. One question that I did have related to what another council member asked. In terms of situations where, because you said this was consistent, what we have had as a penalty for this, for this entity, has there been circumstances in the past where we have, as a, as a public body, reduced either that fine or those number of days in which, that they're responsible for? And what were the circumstances around that if there was a reduction?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, I'm not aware of any circumstances when you've reduced it, but I certainly think it's within your discretion. And within the code, it, it gives you that discretion to issue the suspension or civil penalty that, that you see fit.
And i- if we were to, 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 to go about that, I know certainly there is a, a precedence. And maybe there isn't a precedence here in this particular piece going down that route. Are there things that we should be as a body, you know, in terms of fairness for others who have faced a fine of this similar either length of time or amount of money? You know, for example, can this body look at whatever we want? Or do we look at, you know, the service that this particular organization has provided to the community? I just would, would, would like to hear if, if there's any walls around that or, or anything we should be, because I would be, I would want to be cautious in, in terms of, I know we have discretion, what impact that might have for those past or future.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, if the, if a court were to look at this, the standard that they would use is, did the council use its reasonable discretion? If you can document the reasonableness of, of the actions that you take, a court's going to uphold it. What a court's also going to look at is, did you act arbitrarily, capriciously, or oppressively? Based off our, my research of other court cases from other jurisdictions, the, the suspension is, has been held reasonable by courts. Again, it's anywhere from one to seven days for a violation as well as the fine. The fine has been pretty consistent as well throughout other jurisdictions and, and the court cases that discuss those. You know, certainly if you wish to, to change those figures, you know, a court will look at, you know, is it arbitrary, capricious, or oppressive? If we follow what the city and, and the Eagles have stipulated to, I don't think it's going to fall within that arbitrary, capricious, or oppressive standard.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
One follow-up based on that comment. Is there, is there any, is there any court precedent or any other reason those suspensions cannot be served concurrently?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, I have not run across any of those cases that say they can't be served consecutively. Meaning they, if you choose, you can separate the days.
So maybe I make sure I understand. Right now, the way that I understood it is it was set, in addition, each seven days consecutively for 21 days.
Correct.
Total.
Correct.
What I'm suggesting, is there any reason we couldn't offer or we shouldn't offer, because of precedent, seven days each to occur concurrently for a total of seven days?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, I'm not aware of any cases that, that discuss that or address that particular issue. But again, a court would then look back to, you know, did you act within your reasonable discretion?
Okay. And that doesn't seem arbitrary to you, in your, in your professional opinion?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, what I would say is, it's not my job to decide the penalty, but to rather recommend it.
Understood. Thanks.
Council, I think it's important to understand these, these penalties are recommendations to us. And we have, we have the discretion to raise them or lower them. I don't know if we need to do the, the mathematical gymnastics to stay concurrently as opposed to consecutively. I mean, if we, if, if we want to bring it down to seven days, we bring it down to seven days. I mean, that's, that's within our purview, within our discretion here that we're working off of. Council, are there any additional questions, comments? Well, we'll get to the comments in just a second. Are there any additional questions? One short question, Councilmember?
One short question. And you may not know the answer to this question. I'll understand that. When we have gone out and done these stings before in the past, because you said there's a record of this, and this is consistent with the fines that we have, is it your understanding that we've always had this number of officers go out for those particular stings?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, I don't know, you know, for other instances, how many officers go out. When we contacted the police department, Commander Utech made that decision. So I'll defer to Commander Utech.
Is, is he available, or?
Commander Utech is not here this evening, and I'm, I'm not sure that we could, I'm, I'm not sure to answer that question, Councilmember. Council, if we've exhausted questions, we need a motion and a second to close the public hearing here. And we have to do it via roll call vote. So look for a motion to close the, the hearing.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Martin to close the hearing. No further discussion on this. Mr. Briller?
Councilmember Coulter?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
DeLisandro?
Aye.
Mayor Bussi?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0 to close the hearing. And with that, Leia, we can release you. Thank you for your help this evening. You can have the rest of the evening off, Leia. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Council, our discussion on this now, and which will then ultimately lead to a, a motion regarding penalties, if, however we see fit. I think it's a couple of interesting things. First of all, that basically, as we have heard, they've stipulated to the, to the offenses and stipulated to the, to the penalties here. They, they admit that it happened and They, they admit that it happened and admit that, uh, there was, um, there, there is reason for penalty. I think what we have heard is the, a desire to reduce the penalty based on their, their civic involvement, based on the fact that it, um, they are, have applied for a full liquor license, and, uh, a couple of general extenuating circumstances that could have led to some of these violations. I think it's up to us to decide how it all fits together. I mean, I will admit to the, the questions that I posed and the questions that I had, uh, it kinda still linger. If, um, I, I do have to admit, if, if a door is propped open once, it's been propped open twice or maybe a few more times. And if bartenders have not checked cards once, they've done it more than once, is just my assumption. And, uh, I, I don't know if, uh, if the, uh, the penalties are, uh, equal to the, to the crimes here, but, uh, to the violations. But I think we can acknowledge that because they stipulated to the offenses that have taken place, that we can, we, we can try and balance off of that and judge what might be best. Thoughts, councilmember Martin?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I appreciate both staff's presentation and, and you folks for being here to offer some more context to this. Um, I, I think it comes down to, Mayor, as you mentioned, uh, both parties stipulating to the facts of this. Um, I can understand why three officers would go in, especially if you're trying to demonstrate a pattern of behavior. Makes perfect sense to me. Uh, and looking at what we, that what they could be facing in terms of 60 days per violation, 180 days, it's most of a year at that point, um, and substantially higher fines. I, uh, it, it seems to me that our, uh, legal staff that deals with this, that understands this, that looks what would be recommended in other jurisdictions where things like this has happened, has already walked this back substantially from the hardest penalty that, that could be imposed. Uh, so I, uh, we, I, I say, it, it makes sense, the fact's been stipulated to, and we, um, have a legal department to offer us recommendations like this for a reason, and I'm comfortable moving forward with it.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. I won't, um, I won't repeat too much of what, what others have said. And I, I do wanna say to the folks from the Eagles Club, I, I, uh, I really appreciate that you have stipulated to the facts. I appreciate that you have, um, uh, sort of come clean about, about the viola- violations and, and are willing to accept the, the, uh, appropriate penalties. Um, I think that, that does speak, uh, to your understanding, the responsibility that you hold as a, a license holder. Um, I think, you know, to, to councilmember Martin's point as well, um, I, you know, I, I think our staff has, you know, they, they did not throw the book at them, so to speak, in terms of the, sort of the maximum, uh, penalty that, that could have occurred. Um, and I, I, to me, that, I think that does speak to, to some of those extenuating circumstances, some of the involvement that, that the Eagles Club has had in our community. And, um, I'm, I'm sympathetic to the argument, you know, to the question of why were three officers sent in on this particular, on this particular example? And, you know, I don't know if that's standard practice or not. But to me, that, that question is, is in, not immaterial, but it, it still comes down to the fact that three officers were sent in and the result was three violations. You know, one, one slip, you know, I just forgot to ask or whatever is one thing. Um, but the fact that it happens, happened three times, um, you know, that, that to me, regardless of, of what happened, that was, that was the reality, is that there were those three separate violations. Um, and so I, I do think, um, you know, given all of that, I, I think the, the penalty put forward, is, I think it is appropriate. I, I think too, you know, in, in, I'm, I'm also sympathetic to the effect that, that the license suspension, uh, will have on the employees. But I, I think at the end of the day, based on what occurred, based on the facts as, as I understand them, as they've been explained and, and stipulated, that there is responsibility to go around with, with these violations. That this was not purely a management issue or purely an employee issue, but that it was, it was sort of both. And so I, I think that's why this, this, these particular penalties are appropriate, so.
Counsel, anyone else? Councilmember Delisandro?
At the risk of, at the risk of, of being labeled a, a softie here, I, and I'm gonna throw my restorative justice hat on as opposed to my punitive justice hat on for a minute here. Um, I don't know that it serves to benefit anyone to, to penalize them even though the rules say we should. A- and I'm, I'm saying that as mostly a point of, of, of character more than anything else. Um, if, if, if the, if the goal is to find fault and to ensure that they don't do it again, I would argue that the fact that they have acknowledged and are applying for a much more expensive public liquor license proves to me that they kinda know, um, what the right remedy, long-term remedy is here. In the meantime, what should be the penalty for the violation? Well, the reason I asked the question of, of the folks was partly to understand, like, what would be amenable. If, if a $6,000 fine and no time suspended is, is still getting to us to our point, which is, we held somebody accountable for a violation of a, of a license, then I, then it, and it has the benefit of not impacting members of our community in a meaningful and potentially detrimental way, that feels to me like satisfactory if that's the intention. So I guess maybe I'll pose the question to you all, what's the, what's the intention? Right? To, to find fault and to apply a penalty? Well, then if that's the case, we can, we can apply a penalty that doesn't have this other impact to our community. I throw that out for consideration, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, I think you're councilmember, so, yeah, I think the restorative justice, uh, piece is a, is a, is an interesting take. And I, I think as we, as we look forward, uh, to how we administer this stuff, I think that that is a very, uh, interesting thing to, to consider. And I, and I think we really oughta, oughta look at that. And, uh, you know, as I, as I look at this, um, I think, Mayor, you've laid this out well. I have been a guest, uh, at the Eagles Club and I hope to be there again at some point. And, uh, for the life of me, uh, I cannot recall, you know, if I was there, you know, with, uh, a member or, or not. And, and it, I think that, uh, the point that you make is the part that I can't get around, is that experience of, of being there. And I wasn't, you know, and maybe I was somehow a, a, a guest of somebody, but I didn't sign a book ever. And so I think there's something to be said about, you know, it happened one time and then you had three folks come in there and it happened again. So it's probably happened before. And to councilmember Martin's point, you know, 180 days, if you take 21 days, that's 12% of the fine. So I think that, uh, or 12% of the days, uh, that could have, uh, been administered. I'm not unsympathetic in terms of these are, uh, special times. And, uh, uh, the, the cutbacks in staff, uh, uh, that were explained here. Uh, and I'm also not, uh, unsympathetic to the fact that, you know, that these folks have, uh, been, uh, fine citizens and have been contributors, uh, to the broader community. Although I need to be careful because, uh, I'm, I'm always afraid of, uh, that, uh, you know, that there's some relationship there if you tend to give something to the community that, then that we somehow would provide a different, uh, uh, finding structure for an organization. I don't know how I feel about that ethically. So I think that the best course of action, although, um, you know, I, I certainly am open, uh, to the idea of, of some type of different type of thing, uh, not at this time, uh, is to go with what we've done in the past. And I think that staff has laid that out and they have, uh, uh, put forth, uh, I think a very reasonable, uh, uh, fine structure and amount of days. And I know that, that will have an impact, uh, uh, on, on the institution. But, uh, hopefully this will, uh, be a reminder to other institutions that are in the community that we do have, uh, rules and ordinances that need to be, uh, that need to be, uh, I mean, uh, need to be followed. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Anybody else would like to weigh in? We need to, um, figure out a, a direction forward here now, counsel. And, and I can see hesitancy, I can see some questions. And wondering, uh, councilmember Lohman?
Well, you know, Mayor, I'm gonna go ahead and take a shot at this. I think I've laid out, uh, and I think, I think I'm hearing folks, uh, what they're saying. I know that there is, uh, uh, a little bit of difference, but let me lay it out there. I think we've got a, a motion here, uh, to adopt the, the findings of facts, conclusion of law, decisions of the city council, of the city of Bloomington regarding the alcohol beverage li- license violation at the Richfield Bloomington area number 3208 Fraternal Order of Eagles, and suspending the on-sale club intoxicating liquor license and imposing a civil penalty that's laid out in the recommendation in the staff report.
Second. Motion by councilmember Lohman, second by councilmember Martin, to approve the resolution adopting the findings of facts, conclusions of law and decision of the city council, City Council Bloomington regarding the alcoholic beverage license violations at the Richfield Bloomington area number 3208 Fraternal Order of Eagles and suspending the on-club intoxicating liquor license and imposing a physi- a civil penalty. Counsel, additional comments? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'll be honest, this one's a little bit tough for me. Cause I could see points on both sides of this. Um, and, you know, part of it is, you know, we have, uh, we don't pull, pull people up here that serve minors anymore. We decided not to do that a couple of years ago. And I don't think we shut their business down for extended periods of time for a first offense. And, I mean, they serve police officers who presumably were of age to drink. It was in violation as they admit to the, to their licenses, but, um, you know, shutting them down for 21 days because of that versus a small financial penalty for someone serving kids, it's hard for me to get my head around the disparity in that. And, um, you know, it, this will impact the community, it will impact employees that work there. You know, I do, I do think there's probably a pattern of things just over time developed and, and this kinda, kind of happened, which I think is, you know, part of why they're going for their full liquor license and, and wanting to make sure that what their practice has been is actually what they're supposed to do. Um, it, it's a little troubling that, that came after they broke the rules and particularly after they had a conversation with Mr. Junker, uh, talking about that they can't do that and tried to correct that and, you know, it was still not corrected. So I think this is within the reason of our rules, but I just, I struggle with this, given what we do in what I consider much more serious issue of serving minors alcohol. And, you know, I can say the same thing about that. If you serve one minor, you probably served a couple others throughout the year. Especially if you serve a minor during the month, you know you're gonna be inspected. You know, it's not a surprise, it's not a shock, it's not, you know, it's, it's that way. So this was more of a surprise type of inspection on them. But I, I guess that, that's, that's my struggle. And, you know, maybe it's a little bit along the lines of councilmember Delisandro of just, this seems more than necessary to change the behavior there. Um, and, you know, so for that reason, I, I guess at this point, I would, I would probably vote against this.
So, councilmember Nelson, let me ask you if, um, would it, would a reduced timeframe make you more comfortable? Would 14 days make you more comfortable, 10 days? I mean, something along those lines.
Yes. I think that's the most impactful thing for them and their employees. And I heard the employee issue and, and I, I take that sincerely, that I think that is where the focus is. There seems to be, you know, it'd be blunt, they know they did it wrong and, and they're willing to stipulate that.
So if you would-
Putting people out of work for three weeks is, you know, especially maybe the people that didn't make the mistake. That seems punitive to a group of people that just happen to work there.
So would you be willing to make a, a, an offer of an amendment reducing the penalty, the days from 21 to 14 days?
You okay with that? Sure. Oh, it, I don't know if I can, Dwayne's gonna-
You, you, you can, you can make the amendment, the motion on that?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, what I, what I heard, Mayor, was that, uh, councilmember Nelson was making a, a, a motion, uh, to, uh, amend it, and then there's a second from, uh, uh, from Delisandro, maybe? Possibly, possibly. But, you know, I am, you know, I would look to my secondor and say, uh, you know, I would be open to going from 21 down to 14, uh, if you would be open to that, that I-
I, I hate to be a stick in the mud about it, but I'm not gonna support any reduction on this one. If we don't have a policy discussion about our other codes on the books and making those more serious, I'd be happy to do that down the line, but I think this is appropriate.
Okay, well, I, I think we're stuck at 21?
Councilmember Carter?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So I also will say that this was a tough decision and very challenging. And I think, um, you know, I, I appreciate, uh, the perspective that was shared from, uh, the folks at the Eagles. Uh, you know, I guess my perspective on this is that we need to be consistent in our application of our policies and our ordinances. And if there's something that we don't like in them or how we apply them, if we wanna take more of a restorative justice approach, like, I think we should have that conversation. I just don't think it's in the middle of this hearing. And so, you know, in fairness to past people who have gone through this process and, and in fairness to those who will go through, um, it again, as long as we have the policies that we have in place, uh, I, I do think that we should stick with them. And again, if we want to change our policies or if we want to compare how, you know, what it looks like for a minor violate, like, the violation of serving a minor versus some others, I, I'm, I'm totally open to that. Uh, I just think that, you know, given what our policy is and, you know, that the fact that this is one of the, the recommendation coming from staff is a, um, isn't the 180 days, right? It isn't the $6,000. Um, it is a lesser, it is lesser, um, in terms of what we could be and what could have been recommended. Um, I'm going to go, I'm gonna vote in support of the staff recommendation. Again, this is very challenging. Personally, I wanna say like, no, 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 let's just, you know, let's just, uh, let it go. But, um, at the same time, we have these policies in place for a reason. And, and so I'm gonna go, I'm gonna be voting in support of the, uh, the, the motion.
Councilmember Delisandro?
Thank you, Mayor. My understanding from what, um, Attorney Zuniga said though was that the standard was one to seven days. It wasn't seven days. Did, did, in terms of looking at the application across, did I misunderstand you?
And I thought it was up to 60 days.
That, that's what the, that's what the code says. But in terms of his looking at the practice across, in, application, my understanding was the average was one to seven days per violation. Do I have that correct? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Or Mr. Zuniga could come back up with a, with a bad wheel.
Yeah, I'm really sorry.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Delisandro. Yeah, so looking at the case law regarding violations, uh, in the state of Minnesota for other jurisdictions, it ranges, and of course it ranges based off their particular codes. Um, and I've seen violations, um, for one day, up to seven days, and anywhere in between that range.
Thank you.
Um, but you are correct that our code and councilmember Carter does say up to 60 as well.
So my, I guess my point is that this is a new council and we can make a decision about what it looks like for this council to make determinations. And I, I don't feel held obligated to what other folks did five, 10, 15 years ago. Simply because I'm interpreting this as a contemporary of today's information. And so holding that and with a precedent, there, there isn't precedent in, in, you know, if I think about trying, I'm not an attorney, obviously, but in case law, if you will, if that's the precedent, then I feel like we have the flexibility without violating any kind of consistency to reduce this if we want to, um, within that parameter. So I, I, I throw that out there for consideration. But if, if, if we said, you know, if it's, if it's $3,000 and 10 days or $3,000 and seven days, are we affecting the same outcome, which is they feel pain and they accept their responsibility and they're making the long-term impact to, to address this by getting the full public license? Do we solve the, do we solve the issue at hand, which is satisfactory applic- Do we solve the, do we solve the issue at hand, which is satisfactory application of our, of our job as, I don't know, Judge Judy executioner, or kind of whatever it is?
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess then I would put forth maybe the proposal that we look at increasing the amount per violation and then decreasing the days. I'm okay with it being balanced out. If we're, so before, in the previous amendment, it was more about decreasing the days and keeping the, the fine the same, but if we were to increase the fine, I would be more comfortable decreasing the days.
I agree with that. I completely agree with that, Mr. Mayor. I think if, if it's a $6,000 fine and a seven-day suspension, it feels reasonable to me based on what we, what we have within our parameters.
Councilmember Lohman?
Mayor, may I make a suggestion here? One thing that we could do to try to speed this up a little bit is, my suggestion is, since we didn't have a friendly amendment, one thing that this, this body could do is, you know, if we have an amendment, you know, get a second and then just vote on that so that we know where we're at, so we can kind of move this along. So I would, my suggestion would be to, Councilmember Carter, would be to put that amendment forward and then have a secondor. In fact, I'd be happy to second that so we can move this forward. So if that's your motion, I'm happy to second that so that we can kind of have discussion about that and then vote on it, and then we can move to the motion we already have, so...
So Councilmember Carter?
I'm happy to put that amendment forward, and then...
To which amounts?
To, so, 6,000. Is it, so were you, so actually, I would look at Lona, because Lona said it. Sorry, Councilmember DeLisandro.
My proposal was the maximum penalty, it's just $2,000 per violation.
Yep. And that's what I would agree to. So 6,000 per violation and then seven days suspension.
And I would second that.
And to be clear, 6,000 total, 2,000 per violation, so, yes, we know, that would, that would change things significantly, 6,000 per violation, so. So the amendment with a motion and a second is to reduce the penalty to, or to change the penalty to a $6,000 fine and a seven-day suspension of license. Questions on that? Councilmember Coulter?
So I just want to clarify this, because we've run into this trouble before. The vote we are about to take is a vote to adopt the amendment to the motion, correct? Not on the actual motion?
Correct. This is to adopt an amendment to the motion, and the amendment is $6,000 and seven days, as opposed to $3,000 and 21 days.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify what we're voting on, because I remember instances...
I do, too.
I have voted incorrectly, because I didn't understand what we were voting on.
And Mayor, just a point of clarification, consecutive days or something else?
Consecutive.
Consecutive. Is everybody clear on what we're voting on here? This is an amendment to the motion to change the penalties from 3,000 and 21-day suspension to 6,000 and a seven-day suspension. Everybody clear on that? So there's the amendment to the motion. I'm assuming we have to do all these roll call as well. No further discussion. Mr. Brillert?
Coulter?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Lohman?
No.
Nelson?
Aye.
Martin?
No.
DeLisandro?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye.
So we have an amended motion, and we have that motion on the table for penalties to be a fine of $6,000 and a suspension of seven days. Councilmember Lohman?
Mayor, I know I need a second for this, but I'd like to call a question, and the question would be on the main motion that's now been amended to, what is it?
6,000 and seven consecutive days.
Thank you very much.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to call the question. Now, the question, the penalties would be $6,000 and a seven-day suspension. Everybody clear on that? No further council discussion. Mr. Brillert?
Coulter?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Martin?
No.
DeLisandro?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye.
Motion carries six-one. Well, thank you for the discussion, and thanks for bringing things forward that we, I do think we need to look at and consider. I mean, I think you're right, Councilmember Nelson, if, I mean, is there, is there equality in these violation, in the penalties for violations, or do we need to look at balancing these things out a bit more? And we need to consider them a bit more.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, just a point of parliamentary clarification. We just voted, calling the question, so we need to vote on the actual motion itself.
I thought we were voting on the motion.
No, sorry. Wanted to make sure you were clear. Yeah, yep, yeah, I got you. And I should have clarified that, but...
Did you catch that?
I was thinking that we were voting on the call of question, Mayor. We can certainly reconsider if you'd like.
No, no, I think we're good. We're good. I think, just to clarify, okay, we did vote to call the question, and we did, now that we've called the question, now we will vote on the, on the question itself.
Point of clarification, did that have to be unanimous?
No, it doesn't.
Okay, okay, thanks.
All right, everybody clear, because I wasn't just a moment ago. My bad.
There's a lot of sausage.
My apologies. Mr. Brillert?
Councilmember Coulter?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Martin?
No.
DeLisandro?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye.
Motion carries six-one, for real this time, on the penalties that we, that were established, correct? All right.
Mayor, one more point, just a point of clarification. Sometimes people wonder, when will those seven days start? And just wanted to clarify for the record that staff will work with the Eagles on the specifics of that.
Thank you for the discussion here, and thanks for the information. Do appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you for talking it out.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, we will move on to item five in our agenda, our organizational business, and our first part of organizational business, item 5.1, an update on the infamous 494 project, the airport to 169. Ms. Marone, good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is infamous at this point. So we will have Mindot staff, both Lisa Austin and Amber Blanchard presenting remotely. They're gonna give an update on the final results of the visual quality manual, something that we've all been very interested in, transportation management plan update, and that is basically gonna go over a bit of the modeling and the plans to handle the traffic impacts with the traffic changes during construction, as well as a brief overview of the cost participation estimates for this project. As you're listening to the update, of course, you'll have the opportunity to ask Mindot staff if you, any questions that you have, but I also suggest that you consider items that you may want staff to bring back at a later time for some additional discussion. One of those items would be our context-sensitive solutions framework, which will be an outcome which kind of guides the public art and creative placemaking. We'd be looking for some guidance on expectations of the council on timeline for implementation and developing a plan for that as well. So now I will turn it over to Lisa Austin.
Good evening, Ms. Austin Welson. Welcome, welcome.
Thank you. I was looking for my unmute button there, sorry for the pause. So, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Lisa Austin with Mindot, and I have my colleague Amber Blanchard on the call as well, if there's some questions that she needs to answer. And I'll try to start my video here so I can wave. Good evening. Hopefully you can all see my screen with the PowerPoint slides?
Yes, we can. Please, go ahead.
Okay, very, all right, very good. So, as Amy mentioned, I'm here to talk about the visual quality manual and the context-sensitive solutions framework guide. As a reminder, I'm sure you're all familiar with this, but, you know, the 494 will be reconstructed or improved in four phases. Right now, we're working on project one, which is the things in blue, so the easy pass lanes will be added along the section of 494. The interchange at 35W will be reconstructed and improved, and then we've got three bridges that are rebuilt, Nicollet, Portland, and 12th, and then a brand-new pedestrian bridge at Chicago. So I'm here to talk about the visual quality. You may have heard this before, but the visual quality process involves having a visual quality advisory committee. There's about 45 people on that committee. It includes Mindot, Bloomington, Eden Prairie, Dyna and Richfield, and Hennepin County. There's staff on this, elected and appointed officials, and people from the public who have been serving on this committee. We've been meeting a little bit more often than monthly for about five months with this group, so they've put in a lot of time helping us with this project. We've had three phases of public engagement, where we've gone out to the general public to get feedback, one in December-January timeframe, and February, and again in early March. Consultants we have on board for this are SEH and they're landscape architects, and then Forecast Public Art has been helping with the public art process and the creative process. And again, the deliverables are this visual quality manual and the context-sensitive solutions framework. Visual quality manual is a very typical thing we have with Mindot projects. It really gets to the architectural elements in a project, so, you know, what do the railings look like? What do the bridge piers look like? What do the wall textures look like? So the architectural features on the infrastructure that we leave behind. The special thing we're doing for this project is the context-sensitive solutions framework, and this is really where Richfield and Bloomington can have opportunities to put public art and benches, or garbage cans, or other, you know, amenities for pedestrians, bench, you know, bike fix stations, or shelters. On Mindot right-of-way, that's not being used for, you know, the lanes of traffic, so up on the street level, adjacent to bridges and things like this. Most of these things would be implemented after the project is done, but this guide kind of helps you figure out where you might be able to do some of those kinds of things. We know there was interest from both Richfield and Bloomington to know where they could do some of these things after the project was done. So you may have seen this before, but, you know, as a reminder, you know, the first phase of the visual quality process is to just ask the community what's important, you know, what's the history in the area, what's the culture, what's some of the natural environment that's important to the area, what kind of parks there are. So once we have that information, then the landscape architects try to put those into designs, and we choose one final design, and then put that onto the architectural elements. And that, and all three of these, you know, it's been challenging with COVID, but, you know, in all three of these phases, there were some in-person things at farmer, pop-ups and farmers' markets. We, Mindot and our partners, sent emails out to lists of people that were interested in the project, social media, online surveys, virtual listening sessions. Flyers were posted in buildings, apartment buildings, and businesses along the corridor for people that weren't online, and then we sent postcards out to residents in the adjacent areas, and that had a phone number on it, so people could call with questions if they didn't have a way to get to the website. So pretty robust engagement, and thousands of people responded, so I think we got good feedback from the public. In that first phase, this is the kind of things that people told us they liked about living in Bloomington and Richfield. You know, you can see there's a lot of words that refer to the natural environment, you know, parks, nature, you know, spaces, you know, there are trails, water, you know, lots of natural environment comments, and then a lot of things about, you know, the people, the people, the friendliness, the, you know, services, you know, so a lot of things about the people in the area. So from there, the landscape architect, so they developed 12, I think, to begin with, but we narrowed it down to four, and the public got to vote on which of these four designs they liked the best. And the winner was the lake beds theme. So you can see here's, based on lake depth maps, you can see the wavy lines kind of look like what those aerial lake depth maps look like. So you can see how the designers have applied that to the walls and to the railing designs. Here's a few more renderings of what those will look like. This is a wall texture, a retaining wall texture. You can see a little bit of the pattern on the railings there. Some more images of what the texture might look like, more detail on the railing. All right, so it's a little picture of what it might look like. The colors are this light tan and black. We don't have a lot of options with the six or seven shades of tan and gray that the feds let us use, so, but these are the two colors that we chose. They match some of the infrastructure that's already in the area, and the light tan is a little bit warmer color than some of the gray colors, so it seemed more natural and would go with the nature, natural theme. So that's the, that's the theme that was chosen and what it, what it'll start to look like on the infrastructure. Another thing that we worked on is what the noise walls will look like. Here's the potential areas for noise walls. That noise wall voting, I believe, is happening now. Amber, if there's questions about that, you can maybe answer that if people ask about when that noise walls, when we'll finally know where we're putting noise walls, but you can see there's quite a few locations on the Richfield side and just one possible location on the Bloomington side, and the people that get to vote on that are in the adjacent areas. What the noise walls would look like, you saw the, the lake beds pattern would be on the highway side, and then on the community side, we'd have a brick texture, so very, you know, there's aesthetic treatments on both sides of the walls, and this is what, it would look something like this on the community side. So when we got to looking at where there would be other amen, where there might be potential other amenities, we shared this map with the public and then asked people to think about the details of what might go in each of these areas. This is a portion of the map that shows the four, the four bridges, the four new bridges. What's interesting about this in this key here, you can see where there's potential noise walls, where there's the new bridges. It's also, the yellow, I think, is, doesn't show it on the key there, but these yellow lines here are new sidewalks, you know, so there's a lot of improvements for the bike and ped folks up on the street level. So as we asked the public what they'd like to see, we talked a little bit about where they'd want to see, you know, the themed railings or some of the landscaping, which is the things that Mindot will be able to come in and add, but other things that communities can add later, public-private partnerships, the cities or other private partners, you know, wayfinding, or public space amenities, picnic tables or something, benches and garbage cans, and then places where you might be able to come back and add public art at a later time. We showed people pictures of, of the areas we were asking about, and this new ped bridge at Chicago is a, is a great opportunity to enhance that area. There's a, you know, green space on either side here. You can see there's the green space there on this side, since this frontage road is going away, and it'll, it'll end here, and people will turn right on Chicago, and then the entrance, the exit ramp off of 494 will kind of start here. So this area here will, you know, not be a road, so it's another spot where there could be a bench, or a, you know, sculpture or something. And then talking to the public what they'd want to see the railings look like and things. This is another area that might have some available space for more landscaping. The entrance and exit ramps at Nicollet are going away, and so this will be a bigger green area, mostly used for stormwater management, but it's still green area where, you know, some, some plantings could, could take place. Portland's another area that we asked folks about, you know, 12th Avenue where the trail comes along here, the, the new bridge will incorporate the trail, you know, into, into the bridge, so it's an area where there's potential for some improvements after the fact, too. So that was the areas that we asked people to give us feedback. I'll talk a little bit more about what they've suggested in a future slide. Another thing that people talked about was wanting some kind of city identification, and there's a couple of ways, you know, there's a few ways you can do that. You can put names on bridges, you can have small signs, but most people were interested in seeing these monument signs, so you can have kind of one monument sign at the entrance and exit, the entrance points to a city. Here's an example of the monument sign that Eden Prairie has along 494. You've probably seen it a little farther west. So we've identified locations where Bloomington and Richfield could put monument signs at a later date after the project is built. So the visual quality manual gets really granular and detailed on exactly what, where the aesthetic treatments go and where some... the aesthetic treatments go and where some other amenities might be. All the, you can see the list, railings, retaining walls, noise walls, those, and these are little icons for what type of application of the lake beds theme would be put in, in those areas. Landscaping here gets a little detailed on where you want to see, you know, landscaping with flowers and grasses or trees or plants that work in a dry pond area. So we've used these icons on the maps to show where the landscaping goes. And then this CSS framework opportunity is where other things, where someone would refer to this, that separate guide and look at, well, where did, where did the public suggest they would want benches or a mural or a sculpture or a picnic table or a flower bed? So then we get to these maps and this is just a, one page of many pages. You can see across the top is the whole corridor and the red box is just what's on this page. So you can see there's the many pages to the visual quality manual. And this is probably the most detailed page because this is where that pedestrian bridge is going over at Chicago. You can see there's the icon where it says local improvements that might be added at a later date. So, you know, that was that green area that I talked about on the previous slide where the, the frontage road is turning into Chicago and leaving potential green space for benches, artwork, other things. So this is what's done now, the visual quality manual with these icons. As Amy said, the CSS framework is almost done. And that will then have, you know, more details about what could go in these areas at a later date. So, so that's the visual quality manual. I guess I'll let Amber talk about the other updates and then we can take questions at the end on all of our topics. Yeah. All right. I'll pass it on to you, Amber, and I'll move the slides. So you just tell me next slide when you want me to advance them.
Sounds good. Thank you, Lisa. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Happy to be here again. Good evening. Can you hear me okay? Sounds like you can.
Yes, we can. Yep, we can hear you great.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, Lisa, go ahead to the next one. So I'm going to talk about our local transportation management and traffic management process that we went through. We are finished with the overview of the whole process, but really quickly, we had to identify, and we started doing this last fall, had to identify our construction staging, potential construction staging for the upcoming project. We refined our travel model, travel demand models so that we can make sure that it accurately represents the transportation network. We ran that travel demand model based on those construction staging scenarios. And then we identified some influence areas and key locations for traffic shifts that could be taking place. We identified our most impacted intersections with those traffic staging scenarios. And then we also identified signalized intersections around the corridor that we'd want to optimize and monitor during construction. And now we just finished a little bit ago, a few weeks ago, our mitigation thresholds for our performance-based approach to identifying those mitigations during construction. So on the next slide here, you'll see basically what our performance approach is. Go ahead, Lisa.
Oops, sorry. Did it, yeah. It jumped twice. Sorry, I thought I went.
There you go. No problem. So our performance-based approach for our mitigations, there are a lot of unknowns still due to COVID as well as what the contractor staging is possibly going to be, given this is a design-build project. And we have a desire, we want to make sure we implement necessary mitigations and not unnecessary mitigations. So what we're planning to do is to monitor our system performance and implement mitigations based on the following here. Vehicle delays and queues, so how far traffic backs up at a certain intersection. Safety and crashes, we're going to keep track of those during construction at intersections. And then pedestrian input as well. And these, the way we are going to monitor that system performance, it will allow us and other agencies to respond to needs during construction. You can move on to the next slide, Lisa. So in this graphic you see here, the red line basically is the border of the area that we are going to be monitoring during construction. And those routes that we're going to monitor are in pink. Next slide, please. And we have a lot of areas we're going to be monitoring. This is a very, very unique situation in that there's a lot of local roadways that help relieve 494 traffic during high congestion, high peak hours. And so that leaves a lot of areas open to take a look at during construction. So we are planning to monitor 79 signalized intersections. Eighteen of those intersections, we will put in temporary communication devices so that we can monitor them at MINDOT and ourselves. And we will be collecting counts this summer for baseline with COVID. We, we still are seeing a lot of lower counts on the local arterial routes that feed into 494 and 35W as a lot of the traffic has gone to the interstate and off of the local system. So this summer, we're anticipating traffic getting back up to a little bit more closer to normal. So we would like to do those counts here this summer so we have a baseline for the contractor moving forward. Next slide, please, Lisa. So really, our next steps are to incorporate this process into our contract documents. And then also, like I had mentioned, doing those, collecting of counts and those turning signal movements as well at some of those signalized intersections, we're also going to be optimizing and monitoring. So the, the counts are really important to do this summer. Next slide, please, Lisa. Now I'm going to move on to cost participation, a really quick summary for you, and I only have a few slides left. So right now, our agreements are currently in development. Andrew Latia is the project manager and I are working with city staff to get those agreements going. They will likely be a two-party agreement between MINDOT and the city of Bloomington. And right now, our current cost for the city is approximately $2 million. And I'll show you here in the next slide what that will look like and how that kind of divvies out a little bit. We do need agreements to be executed by February of 2023 or sooner. And the reason for that is we need to have all of our agreements done before we award the project. We had original letting date of April of 2023 for this project. And we are happy to, looking like schedule, assuming the schedule keeps going the way it is, it's looking like that we're going to be able to let and subsequently get a contractor on board earlier. And we're anticipating that to be roughly the end of February of next year. So we need these agreements to be done in February, so that's why we're working on them now. Next slide, please, Lisa. So these are the areas of cost participation we're anticipating. We've been talking with city staff many, many times over the last six to nine months over, about what will be included in here. Currently, we have some extra snow storage width that was recommended to be included on all of the bridges, Nicollet, Portland, and 12th Avenues for additional snow storage. We also have three locations of walks and/or trails that will be included in the project at city request. Lighting will likely be on bridges, frontage roads, and roadways. However, the city is still determining what they would like to do, city staff, that is, is still determining where the extra lighting would go. Signals, there are two signals, two signal replacements that we are anticipating that has city costs associated with it. There will be some storm sewer adjustments as we move things around and reconstruct areas and reconnect storm sewer that is already being affected. And then we also have some utilities. And here is a big one. There's a sanitary sewer on 78th Street, just north of 494 and east of 100 that the city of Bloomington staff has recommended replacement on. It's a, it's an old one. There's a lot of constructability issues. It's a very deep sanitary sewer. So we do have a cost estimate in there, but at this time, we likely are looking at higher costs to replace that just because of the constructability issues. And that is half city of Bloomington and half MINDOT since we do have some conflict there that MINDOT is taking care of, but the other half will be city of Bloomington cost. So that, the cost for those will likely increase. We just don't have a good number at this point right now. We do have signs that the Mall of America has requested be replaced. And I believe there's only one sign. MINDOT cannot directly share in an agreement or have an agreement with the Mall of America. So we would like to go through the city of Bloomington in order to get that paid for by the Mall of America, and that has precedent and history. And then finally, there will be some maintenance agreements. Inside our particular agreement, there will be no cost associated to, for that upfront here with the cost participation, but there will be future maintenance costs in the bridges, some drainage best management practices, lighting, noise walls on the community side, other walks like minor maintenance such as snow clearing and that sort of thing. Bridge railing and aesthetics, as of right now, we aren't anticipating any cost participation for aesthetics. But if there is any painting or that sort of thing that needs to go on the railings, that would be a city responsibility. And then utilities, signals, and fences on the community side, which would be mostly mowing, and same thing for noise walls unless there's graffiti on there, that would also be on the community side. That would be the responsibility of the city. I believe that is my last slide, Lisa. If you want to go to the next one, I think, yep. If you do have any more information, please go to our website, our project website. It's getting really exciting right now as we're entering kind of the last week of our public comment period on our environmental assessment document. And Lisa, you'd mentioned the noise walls earlier. That voting process is underway. The public comment period for the EA ends on May 19th and the noise wall voting ends on May 25th. So thank you all, and Lisa and I'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Well, thank you both. Appreciate the, the information and that comprehensive presentation. Good stuff. It's good information. I appreciate that. I'm sure we've got some questions here. I've got, I'm going to go back a bunch of slides and ask both you and our city staff here regarding noise wall locations. And assuming that was something that Bloomington weighed in on, we had a good discussion, that this wasn't, this wasn't something, did, I'll ask, did we get everything we wanted with the noise wall locations?
Mayor and council, noise walls are a very prescriptive formula. There is not a lot of opportunity for weighing on, in on where they meet the minimum criteria to be considered. So noise wall analysis was done along the entire corridor and on 35W on the impact, the areas affected by the, the project. When they put in those receptors, there's certain criteria on number of locations that would be impacted and the number of decibels that potentially could be reduced. Once you hit that minimum threshold, they're identified as potential, and I'm sure Amber could give like the actual details on this, but this is the general process. Then, then those areas are eligible for the voting. And then it is determined, the actual whether it moves forward is determined based on the results of that voting and what the residents and owners in those areas desire.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification regarding noise walls.
Mayor, one of my questions was about that. Could I ask that now?
Councilmember Lohman, please.
Thank you. So my one question I had, he asked, the mayor asked the other one. In terms of residential, does that play any role in terms of if you have residential in that area, does that lower the standard, increase the standard, no difference at all?
Councilmember Lohman, I believe that it, well, maybe I should just let Amber answer this because she'll give you a more accurate answer.
And let me just, just so we could save time. So my question is, if we have future residencies, let's say, for example, Penn and America or any other part of the corridor that may be there, is there a time to, you know, re-up that or relook at it? So those are my two-point questions.
That, that's a great question as well, Councilmember Lohman. And I do know that it is only based on current in-place construction. And residential does rate much higher than the businesses, but I will let Amber expand on that.
Yeah, Councilmember Lohman, you are correct, Amy. The, the residents do have a vote. So any receptor is what they're called. Anything in terms of single-family or apartment buildings, they do have a vote, especially if they're next to a noise wall or secondary away from a noise wall. If they're affected by the noise and the decibel level, they do get a vote. And I don't recall exactly the amount that each one gets off the top of my head, but they do get a vote. And Amy is correct. It is only based on what is currently out there today. If we have a project in the future that triggers noise, then we will look at any potential developments in the future that are already in place at that specific time.
Mayor, so it's, it's just on the roadway, not if we put a residential property along the highway, right?
That is correct. You have to be in close proximity to where the noise wall would be and be affected by noise in order to take a look and do, run that analysis. That's correct.
Council, anything else? Noise walls or other? Councilmember Lohman?
You know, I just got, now just one question and a comment. So then on page 31 or 280, there were area routes for, I think it's TMP. And what I wanted to know is, and I think I know the answer to this, why was Old Chocopee 98th Street not included at all in this? I would, I would imagine that, you know, to some extent, people are going to use this to, you know, if they're going 169 or they're trying to get out of the 494 corridor. Was it cost? Was it impact? Was it not looked at? What was the rationale why Old Chocopee Road was included?
Councilmember Lohman, I'll take the first, the response. And if you want more details, there is a lot more details. But we did identify all of the known cut-through routes, the diversion routes that we see happen throughout the city whenever there's some, something causing congestion or additional congestion on 494, weather, accidents, those types of things. So we have a pretty good track on those. We provided a really substantial map to MINDOT. They, they did a lot of diversion modeling and they identified the top, I believe it was over 100 intersections in, in the whole area that would be affected. Surprisingly, the only one on Old Chocopee Road that's potentially affected is, or ranking in that top 100 that would be affected, is Old Chocopee and Old Cedar Avenue. And so that is still within the limits of that red box, and that kind of helped define that area as well.
So that area is included or not? Because that-
It is included.
Okay, it is included. Okay. All right. Well, I trust staff that that's right. And so if, for some reason, we start seeing impacts of that, what's the process? If, do I, you know, send an angry letter to you or how do I do that?
Councilmember Lohman, that's a great question. So yeah, it is going to be triggered by thresholds such as contacting city staff, contacting project staff. The next step after we start to get contacts with concerns would be to, sorry, the next step would be to, if it was a brand-new traffic pattern change, to let it settle for about two weeks. Because whenever you make major changes to the system, it will take a little while for the traffic pattern to change. After that, it would trigger the contractor to go and actually measure the delays. There's also a modeling program that's used for that. And then they have a set of, a toolbox of, we'd be looking at ways to mitigate that traffic. Some of the quickest and easiest will be signal timing changes, immediate signal timing changes.
I appreciate that. So at least there's a process if, if we find that this isn't, dude, what's happening. So then my comment then. I would just assume, I made the statement before, that, you know, the, any impacts to the corridor and 494 in terms of flooding with regards to the 100-year flood plan or beyond has been looked at in terms of the drainage, page 35, page 284 of our packet. And so I just wanted to comment that, that, that I'm assuming that that's been done.
Councilmember Lohman, there was a detailed analysis of drainage, drainage issues along the entire corridor.
Council, additional questions, comments? I see no hands coming up. I do want to say, I appreciate the amount of work and time and effort and thought that has gone into this because, I mean, God willing, we're doing this once. And we're not, and we might as well do it in such a way that it's, you know, it's effective and it's attractive and it's, I mean, it fits within the community and it, and it works for us all. So appreciate the time that you've spent on it. Appreciate our friends at MINDOT, all the work that has gone into this. And I know so many committee meetings as well, because I've been in a few of them, not all of them, but in a few of them where there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of discussion. And I think it's, it's definitely for the better. So thank you for that. Councilmember DeLisandro?
Just a quick question. The, on our consent agenda tonight, item 3.3, there was a resolution approving the MINDOT master partnership contract. Is that the contract that you were referencing earlier in the, in the presentation, or is this different?
It was not. Oh, all right.
Call it in the cavalry. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, those are very different. We will have a very specific agreement, as Amber mentioned, for this project. We'll probably also have several agreements with the City of Richfield and Hennepin County. The master project for, with MINDOT is for like our construction testing, or if there's a one time signal thing that comes up on a joint signal that MINDOT owns and the city maintains. So those are very isolated incidents, and this will have a very specific project related agreement, several of them as a matter of fact.
Okay, so this is more like an SLA for, between the two entities for routine things that we've been doing for a while between the two entities for the city.
Under that definition, yes, I don't know what an SLA is, but.
Sorry, sorry, service level agreement is basically defining that we are partnering. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Council, any additional questions?
I don't think I heard that, sir.
I don't think you want to hear that one. If not, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Council, I have a proposal for you. Tell me what you think about all this. We're on to item 5.2, our 2023 budget update and discussion. It's going to be a pretty meaty discussion. Next week, next Monday night, we have a fairly short agenda. I think we'd be at about an hour with the agenda. Yeah, I know, she's, yeah, she's, we had about an hour agenda. What would you, I would propose moving this entire discussion with the budget update and discussion to next Monday night, because I know at least a couple of our council members are dragging a bit here. And might give them a chance to feel a little bit better, and we can come back and we can get after this when everybody's feeling a little bit better. Councilmember Coulter?
Mayor, I would say as long as you're not asking Ms. Carlson to do your brake work anytime soon, I think that's a good suggestion.
Thoughts on that? Councilmember Loman?
You know, Mayor, I would, I would appreciate it if we went down that route now. I can't, I did run my mouth, so I owe you a little bit of time after 10. So, you know, if we thought we could get it in, but it sounds like it's a pretty meaty discussion. If we've got less next week, I, or, you know, next time we get together, I'd prefer to do that. I hate to, hate to do that to staff waiting around and, you know, you can get me in another meeting, but, but I'd prefer if we do that.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Mr. Mayor, just a question, quick question about, I know there were some feedback specifically that Ms. Carlson was looking for us to give her tonight. Is that timely? They cannot wait a week? Or do we need to at least give her? I see Jamie nodding. I'm not quite sure if that's, yes, it can wait?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember DeLisandro, it can wait the one week. We had originally kept next Monday intentionally short because I had a planned absence and Kari is going to be traveling for work as well. Both of us will be able to participate virtually. We can make that happen, and I, I would much rather have substantial time available to the council to make sure we have a good discussion rather than try to work it in yet tonight at a late hour, because it's, it's an important conversation. The questions that Kari had can wait as well. The engagement schedule will be starting soon, but next week will give us enough time to plan for that.
Good with that? All right, then I, I would move that we, we table carryover, layover. Item 5.2, our 2023 budget update and discussions to a week from tonight and put it on that.
I'll second your tableing or whatever.
Got a motion in a second. No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Item 5.3, our city council policy and issue update. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I just wanted to provide a one timely update as it pertains to the legislature. As council is aware, we have a couple of items of interest this session. The, the amendment for our HRA language moved through one of the bodies today, so that's good. We're expecting it to move through the other, and, and then we'll be in good shape there. And then related to the local option sales tax, Bloomington's request was fully included in the Senate tax bill that was released today by Senator Nelson. There is some slight difference in the language between what's in the Senate and what's in the House. And I imagine that there are much broader differences between the Senate and the House and their respective tax bills that are going to be discussed in conference committee anyway. But the good news is it appears that we're in good shape, along with many of the other communities that are requesting a similar permission from the legislature as well. And just for people who are watching and aren't familiar with this conversation, again, the city has requested authority from the state legislature to implement a half cent sales tax to fund four specific capital improvement projects. And if the legislature does grant that permission, those projects will be on a general election referendum, which would likely be in November of 2022. So we'll certainly keep the community informed as that proceeds, but I wanted to make sure the council knew because it's a timely update.
Council, any questions of Mr. Verbrugge on that one? All right. I want to report, we had our second council listening session this evening. I thought it went well once again. We filled up the full half hour and had good, three good discussions, actually. Sally Ness spoke again with the council, and we had a good discussion about conditional use permits specifically as they relate to 8201 Park Avenue. And some good back and forth about acceptable uses and questions that were asked and maybe answered or not answered in the original discussion, I think 10 or 11 years ago when when the conditional use permit was brought forward. So I anticipate this is going to be a continuing, ongoing discussion with Ms. Ness about this. And I think it's going to be helpful to try and get some greater understanding as to exactly where we stand and what the, what the, the details about that conditional use permit and the use of the property at 821 is all about. We heard from Jan Cooley, who told us a very upsetting kind of story about the work that she has done with Sella and the, the work that they did on her home. And it was not to her satisfaction, and there were issues back and forth. And it was nice to hear that the folks in our inspecting office worked very closely with her and offered as much support as they possibly could have. But very quickly, I think this kind of spun out of the control of what the city could do and became a legal issue. And I know there was ultimately a settlement according to Ms. Cooley, and I don't know that she's completely satisfied with it, but she wanted to bring it forward to us and make sure that we understood and we, we had a good discussion on it. We talked about it. And then finally, Mr. Cliff Carlson came forward and talked about a couple of different things, sustainability related. He is in favor of more solar power and solar panels and solar gardens in the City of Bloomington up to and including possibly putting them on top of any new parking ramps we build, whether it's in the South Loop or anywhere else. And just to find new ways to, to install solar arrays and start collecting those. He also had some comments and some concerns regarding our organics program. He said the participation rate was fairly low in his neighborhood, even though I think he is a, he is an advocate and has talked to his neighbors about it. I don't know that it is completely taken yet. I do, I think I heard Councilmember DeLisandro offer to, to meet him and to go door to door and evangelizing about organics, organics recycling. We had a good discussion about organics recycling as well. So all in all, I think it was a, another good conversation. And I think, given that over the, the two times we've done it, we've, we've had, I think, seven people come forward, and four of those people are first time people who have been in front of us, which basically mission accomplished, because that's what we were trying to do was to set this up in such a way that it's more accessible to folks, that they're more comfortable coming forward, and that it's not completely dominated by a small group of folks that, like we've seen over the past couple of years. So I'm very happy what we've seen so far and look forward to continuing that. So, Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to thank Barb Wolf and the community development staff for setting up all of the small business visits last week for Small Business Week. I think that's what it's called technically. And so I had the pleasure of meeting with Missy and Amy at Drool and Moose. I may have bought some chocolate on my way out, maybe, oh, too much, but, and we had a really, really wonderful conversation, very positive. They spoke very, very highly of their experience working with staff in Bloomington recently and in many years over the past. They were very excited about food trucks, as they have a food truck, and have been active voices for food trucks in Bloomington for many years. And again, so overall, very, very positive conversation. They did have some ideas for ways that we could do a better job of supporting small businesses in Bloomington. They suggested maybe having a small business advisory committee or commission of some kind. They did express a desire to have more frequent and better communication with small businesses across the city, so they actually had not yet received any kind of official communication that the food truck policy had passed. And then they had, they noted that there have been policy and zoning barriers that have prevented them from starting other businesses, and they're currently looking to expand, and they're having, it's been a challenge. And so I just want to bring those things up. I, I promised that I would elevate what I learned in our conversation, and I, I really did like their idea of a small business commission or committee of some kind, especially as we get our small business development center off the ground. I think that having the perspective of small business owners in the community would be very helpful. Drool and Moose is a woman owned business, and I think would be a very valuable contributor in that effort. So just wanted to share a little bit about my visit with them and the conversation we had.
Thank you for going out and participating. That's great. Councilmember DeLisandro and then Councilmember Loman. Councilmember DeLisandro?
Well, I too had a great opportunity to visit with a women owned business. The folks at Nova Vet Clinic have taken over that business about four years ago from a longtime Bloomington resident, both, both Dr. Rachel and her husband Ryan are longtime Bloomington residents, were raised here and, you know, do great work. They, they gave me similar feedback around communication and asked that we, especially in, if there are things that potentially impact them, that knowing about them sooner rather than later is really helpful. So if they're, if, if, if they, even if we don't know it's impacting them, the idea that, hey, if this zoning change or this other thing change may affect you, you should know about it, because they could be working on things like expansions or other things like that, that they're not necessarily privy, you know, privy us to know, but would want to have, you know, changes or ideas in mind when they do that. So just some, some things there. They are specifically very thrilled that there will no longer be an abandoned, you know, gas station across the street from them. So they are thrilled to hear that. And actually, it was the first time they had heard about that. So that's another example of information that is, is positive that the community could know about that, that we haven't necessarily made super easy for them to get to. So, but really wonderful, and I agree, Ms. Wolf did a great job. I had a couple of quick things, quick questions for, for city staff if possible. I did want to kudos out to, to your point about Mr. Cliff earlier today, the Bloomington Recycling and Garbage Guide was, came in the mail for me. It's also available out front if you didn't get one, but it's, I thought it was great. And I think I got some feedback from residents that said, hey, I was really excited to see this. There, there are some, you know, other things we could include in the future, like reusability and, and also, you know, waste reduction in general, right? And so continuing to help expand the, the ways that we help folks understand how, how they can be making a difference here is really good. But kudos to the folks that put this together. I, I think this is one of the outcomes of the, like the communications grant that we got, right, as part of Hennepin County's requirement for it, right? So really nice, comprehensive work, whoever did this, kudos, and I'm excited. And yes, I am going to go with Cliff and walk around with a couple of extras of these just to make sure people know about them. He lives, he lives about six blocks from me, so be looking forward to that. Okay, quick question. I had asked last, our last meeting about a support letter to Representative Hornstein regarding the Active Transportation Fund. I went on vacation. I'd have no idea if that got done. I'm hoping that it did. I know we weren't, we weren't going to sign it individually, so I just assume it went off and staff did their part. Can I get an update on that?
Mr. Verbrugge?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember DeLisandro, that one fell off my radar screen, so I will double check tomorrow, see if our staff, our transportation and legislation staff have that one, and I will follow up with everybody tomorrow.
Okay, thanks for that. I believe that there's still time, and what I forwarded to you was basically a letter that the folks from St. Louis Park were going to use, so hopefully it's mostly boilerplate for us. Okay, and then maybe you were going to get to this already, but, you know, since Mr. Thule wasn't at our meeting today, I figured I would just ask about carts. How are things going as it relates to carts? Since I know it's been a couple of weeks since we talked about that, I'm hopeful that we've made some progress in getting either Met Council or ourselves some point of view on that.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember DeLisandro, we, since Mr. Thule brought the concern forward, we've actually had staff monitoring along American Boulevard just to get a better understanding of where the carts are on a regular basis. It's actually been an interesting study to, to follow, is that on a daily basis, as, as we've been out there, the numbers range from any, any given day being one, two, or three to as many as maybe like six. There was one day a couple of weeks ago where there was actually nine, but it changes from day to day. And so one of the steps we're going to take is accessing some video capability that we have in that corridor to see if we can actually identify when and how the carts are moving. But it's clearly, as I, as I shared with Councilmember DeLisandro before, there's, there's this sort of organic movement of the carts that's occurring. They're not just leaving a, a shopping area and getting left on a corner and sitting for days and days and days. They're moving, and people in the area are clearly utilizing and going back and forth, or the retailers are actually going out and retrieving them on a regular basis. Our next step is we're going to, we're going to be sending a letter to the retailers that we know in the corridor do have carts to let them know that we are working on this concern, asking them to help us be part of the solution. And then hopefully addition, raising some additional awareness with them that we want them to be more assertive in taking care of their equipment. And once we, once we do just a little bit more analysis and have that conversation with the retailers, we'll, we'll get to the point of maybe having a longer term solution. But we wanted to start with making sure that we had good information to work from. I think we're getting much closer to doing that. I want to thank Carla Henderson because she's grabbed the bull by the horns here in terms of making sure that we're monitoring this, and we have an idea of how the carts are moving about. And we'll continue to keep the council updated as we move forward.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor. And just as I said the last time before, city manager, you don't need to, you just add my, my letter of support to the, to that letter to St. Louis Park around the transportation piece. One question that I did have for you, Mayor, and city manager, and maybe it's the police chief, as the summer starts to heat up, I imagine crime will also heat up. And I'm wondering if it does make some sense at some point to have another look to see how we're doing from a crime standpoint, to give an update to the public in terms of where we're at, what the movement's been since the beginning of the year. Has it decreased? Has it increased? Just so the general public has a, has a good understanding of what's taking place. And I know that you serve on a, on a committee that's focused around that. I just wonder if you have any comments in terms of what you've been seeing.
I, I do think that makes sense. I'm trying to remember when we had the start of the year, I think it was January, February. So, you know, a six month update here in June probably makes good sense to not only talk about where we are, where we are, but also what plans are in place for the summer, not only for Bloomington but metro wide, because I think there's the acknowledgement metro wide that there is going to be. I think there's the acknowledgement metro-wide that there's going to be, there's gonna be a need for coordination of efforts. And so, I think, I won't put the chief on the spot right at this moment, but maybe to, to say within the next, I don't know, next 30, 30 or 60 days that we get an update as to where, where we are from a status perspective and what plans might be for, for the coming months. So, okay?
And Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Lohman, councilmembers, if I can just chime in also, this is an active conversation amongst the various jurisdictions that there's discussion that's going on. We've, we've been in discussion with Hennepin County and some of the county commissioners, just as they're looking forward to what's going on this summer. And there's a fair amount of communication between the cities and certainly amongst the various law enforcement agencies within those cities. So, we will put something together and bring some information back to the council and the community, probably in early to mid-June.
Council, anything else this evening? One final plug, go to the circus. Went down opening night with, with the chief, and we had a great time. It's, it's a, it's a very fun show. I think you'd really enjoy it. So, I advocate going to the circus. No animals. It's all, it's all acts, and it's, it's a lot of fun. So, you'd like it. With that, if there's no further business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this evening.
So moved.
Got a motion in a second to adjourn this evening. No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you all very much for the discussion tonight. Thanks for tuning in, folks. Thanks to staff for your work putting this all together and bringing us home. Thanks much.